Helps if I turn my mic on. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to today's afternoon session only council meeting. It's Tuesday, September 17th, 2024. And I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. I'm going to read aloud some language here that's needed regarding Dr. Barber's participation in today's council meeting. We will have teleconference participation at this meeting from Councilmember Barber pursuant to the California Brown Act rules for just cause attendance. Councilmember Barber, please respond to the following questions. Can you hear me well?
Yes, I can.
Were you able to hear our proceedings on this end up until now?
Yes.
Do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
Yes.
Please give us a brief general description of the circumstances relating to your need to appear remotely.
Medical.
Is anyone over the age of 18 with you in the room?
No.
Can everyone clearly hear Councilmember Barber?
Yes.
All right, we have positive confirmation from everybody in the room that I heard of at least. The Brown Act requires that any votes taken during the teleconference portions of this meeting be taken by roll call. And with that, I will pass it to Clementine to do roll call and share with the public and how they could participate in the meeting today.
Councilmember Barber.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Mayor Williamson.
Here.
And the record will reflect that Councilmember Hafa is not here. Information on participating in this meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is available on this meeting's agenda, which is online at iSearchMonterey.org. Remote commenters, you will be muted until it is your turn to speak and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you are connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. In-person attendees must keep phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with our meeting, and thank you for participating in the city government.
Awesome. Thank you, Clementine. And with that, we will roll into the pledge of allegiance and I'll ask Dr. Smith, I'm upgrading you. Mr. Smith here to start us off.
Please join with us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
By the way, if you if you said that you needed to do a procedure on me as a doctor, I would trust you for it, so.
I would refer you to a specialist.
I probably need it, so. Alrighty. With that, we will go into our presentations. Item number one is to recognize city employees for milestone anniversaries for third quarter of 2024. This is a great way to start off today's council meeting with a little bit of levity and appreciation for our staff. So with that, I'll pass it to Hans for introductions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. It's always a fun part of agenda calendar that we recognize our employees who have been with the city of Monterey for such a long time. I wanted to share with you a quick statistic that somewhat related and somewhat not related. But we have about 50% of our employees right now are with the city of Monterey less than nine years. So that's an interesting statistics. So that means that our workforce is constantly replenishing, is constantly recruiting. And of course, some of the folks that are leaving us are going into their well-deserved retirement. So today we are honoring four different employees. David Kuhn from the Monterey Public Library is honored for 40 years of service. Ethan Callahan in the Streets and Utilities Division is honored for 25 years of service. Brent Hall, a police officer in our police department for 25 years of service. And Daniel Bonafant, who works in the Harbor Division as a harbor maintenance crafts worker, will be honored for 20 years of service. And so without further ado, I hand it over to Brian to start us off and say a few words about David, who is the star today with 40 years of service.
Thank you to our city manager Hans and all the honorable mayor and council and all the public in attendance tonight. First off, want to thank David for 40 years of official service and 45 years of unofficial service, as he was also a PTS employee. And want to recognize all the years that he's given to us here in the library. Think of what the library was like 40 years or 45 years ago. You have that somebody that can give us real that historical perspective. And I think when David retires, I think David, we got to put you inside the California History Room. That's going to be your retirement office right there. You can teach us so much. But David has transitioned as a page and moving up, transitioned well over that time, working through the pandemic to also get us to service, curbside service, and really transition and working on our maker space now and working with 3D printing and working with our students throughout the Middlebury and all. Just assisting our staff, getting the Wi-Fi working, all kinds of different things. And David continues to learn and adapt. And I appreciate him and I appreciate working with him every single day. And I'm sure all of his colleagues have before. With that, I want to welcome up David Kuhn. Give him applause.
Well, thank you. I've liked working here. I can't imagine doing anything else. And that's about it.
Another 40.
Give it up for Dave.
See you in another 40.
Please stand by. So I'm just going to read this quick letter here. Dear David, thank you for your 40 years of service to our city and our city council. The Monterey City Council and our city team are grateful for your contributions to the community. You continue to make Monterey a special place for residents, businesses, and visitors alike. You have made a difference. I am proud to be a part of this great team. And in appreciation of your years of service, please accept this commemorative pin honoring your most recent milestone anniversary with the city. Thank you again for your service to our community. I appreciate all that you do and look forward to many more years ahead. Thank you for being a part of the Monterey family. And this is signed by our city manager Hans Uslar. So please give it up again for David. And David, why don't you come on up here?
Come on, guys.
See you around. Thank you. Another 40, David.
Can we, before the library team leaves, can we see that? I see a couple of folks are wearing the, oh, no, I think it's just you wearing the shirt. Can you show off your shirt? Is the camera capturing that? So everybody can see it?
Camera?
Hello?
There we go.
Yep, go stand back there. Yeah.
Give it up for our library. Awesome.
What a model.
Thank you so much. Thank you. You didn't know you were going to do that today, did you? Alrighty. Are we all safe?
Yes, so the next one we want to honor is Police Officer Brent Hall. And the police chief will talk about him for a few minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, guests. When we celebrate these types of recognition, I like to write them a letter, so I just will read from that. Brent today is taking one of his children to college. So this recognizes Officer Brent Hall. The Monterey Police Department takes great pride in recognizing Monterey Police Officer Brent Hall, badge number 181, on the occasion of his 25 years of service to the city of Monterey. Monterey Police Department Officer Brent Hall, badge number 181, has been an integral part of the city of Monterey Police Department for the past 25 years, from July of 1999 through present. Officer Hall started with the city of Monterey as a police officer in July of 1999. Officer Hall was born and raised in the city of Monterey, attended Monterey High School, and has raised his family in this community. During his tenure, Officer Hall has worked as a patrol officer, a field training officer, and most notably Monterey's favorite traffic officer. He's been keeping the streets of Monterey safe, on and off since 2004. Prior to becoming a police officer, Brent was a director of the Whispering Pines Day Camp from 1995 to 1999. During that time, Brent mentored and counseled many of Monterey's youth. The relationships Officer Hall has built with the community and business owners in Monterey is invaluable. Officer Hall holds a bachelor's degree in psychology from Humboldt University. Officer Hall has always led by example in exhibiting professionalism, service, integrity, hard work, and commitment to the law enforcement profession. The city of Monterey Department thanks Officer Hall for his dedication to our community for the past 25 years. Thank you.
And the next or last two in this installment of milestone anniversaries are Ethan Callahan and Daniel Bonafant. And they both work in the Public Works Department and our Public Works Director Andrea Renier will say a few words about them.
So in keeping with the tradition, it's really nice that Ethan is celebrating his 25 years with the city and his son works for parking. So it's always nice to see that legacy in the family and everybody working for the city. He was hired as a street maintenance worker for the Streets Division back in September 1999. Seems like yesterday doesn't it doesn't feel like 25 years ago. So Ethan was promoted to Street Maintenance Lead Worker, and he is now a Street Supervisor. And he, at one point, led the asphalt and concrete work on the streets. So people are used to say that he got you where you needed to go because he was hardworking on the streets. In his free time, he likes spending time with his wife and two children, taking walks along our beautiful recreational trail. I think we can all agree with that one. And he says he enjoys his time here with the people he works, but he's looking forward to retirement in the near future. So I don't agree with that part. Because Ethan is a very valuable member of our team. I'd also like to recognize Daniel. Daniel started in 2004, and he's worked in quite a few different divisions. So he's one of our jack-of-all-trades and master of a few trades. So he started as a crafts worker, and then he transferred to the Parks Division. He then went to Streets, and now he's in Harbor. So he has quite a bit of knowledge and he does a great job in Harbor. So a lot of the things that you see looking good around Harbor, Daniel's there making sure everything looks great for our Marina and Harbor. His knowledge of working in public works made him the perfect candidate for the Harbor Division. He brought many skills to the position, and he, along with his teammates, simply gets things done. He lives locally and has three girls, ages 2, 9, and 18, and he says working for the city of Monterey is a pleasure. So thank you to Daniel and they're not here today, but we want to recognize them.
Alrighty, and with that, I do want to share a few remarks. As most folks are aware, it's election season and there have been comments brought up around pay of our public employees. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to share how important it is that we take care of our workforce. Because they're out there every single day, whether out in public or behind a desk, working, making sure that the services that we love and appreciate in the city of Monterey are the best that we can provide here in the city of Monterey. And so I feel confident in the salary proposals that we've provided for our entire workforce. I know it can be eye-popping to folks sometimes, but we need to make sure that we retain our workforce so that we can have a skilled staff that can keep folks safe and enjoy the wonderful services that we have in the city of Monterey. And I think that the stories that we hear through the milestones and anniversaries that our executive team shared with everybody today are just a testament to that point that I just made. So what I would ask is, of course, if folks have concerns with the way that things are being done, continue to express those concerns so that we can continue to improve our services within the city of Monterey. But if you're out and about and you see one of our city employees out there, whether you're walking into the library or you see a police officer or you see a public works official, just give them a little bit of love. Give them a little bit of a love and appreciation, and that will continue to feed the great services that we have here in the city of Monterey and continue to contribute to what makes Monterey such a beautiful community. So just wanted to give a little bit of love to all of our workforce and a little bit of appreciation in addition to the information that was shared in regards to the anniversaries. So give it up for our city employees. Alright, and with that, I don't want to close off the opportunity for my colleagues to make any comments if they wish to. We're good. Did I cover it?
I've run into a couple of them and appropriately embarrassed them about their number of years. And one particular one, Daniel Bonafante, I worked with his mother in records. She was a records clerk many years ago. And so Danny was a baby when I worked with his mother. And Brent Hall, I remember when he was just starting with the city of Monterey. So a pleasure to see the workers throughout the years still continuing to provide the energy and their service to the community. So they're still very active. We celebrate their anniversaries.
Thank you. Alright, and with that, we'll take it out to public comment. I'm just going to share with folks, just in case you're not familiar with our process of how to participate in public comment. We offer the opportunity for folks to identify themselves at the beginning of the public comment period. Once those folks are identified, we close it off, and then those folks get to speak. So once that period is closed off, you will no longer have the opportunity to speak in that item. Everybody does have an opportunity. You just need to identify yourself upfront. So we're going to start off, and this is for the milestones and anniversaries. This is not general public comment. So I'm going to start off with the chamber. If folks are interested in speaking on public comments regarding the recognition of city employees for milestones and anniversaries for third quarter 2024, please identify yourself by standing up to the left of the lectern or raising your hand in the chamber. So we have one in the chamber and we'll check on Zoom. For folks on Zoom, if you can use the raise hand function. And I'll do a countdown to five, four, three, two, one. And we have one online. So we'll go ahead and start in the chamber.
I just wanted to give a shout out and a little love to David, the librarian, who, as far as I know, has been there my entire life. As far as I know that he was there for my children's entire life. And he didn't say much, but he's, you know, willing to take the time to teach the kids the Dewey Decimal System, which tells you how old I am. And the Monterey Library is like really, really important to our family, and we kind of centered our family activities around it. In fact, my husband and I threw a TV Turnoff Festival at the Custom House Plaza, and we signed 1,500 kids up for the summer reading program. I think in the year 2000, 2001, for the Monterey Summer Reading Program. So that was a really successful program. And then my middle daughter wrote an essay about how much the Monterey Library meant to her and how she grew up with her mother always taking her to the library and how literacy meant to her. And she got one, a library award, and then she went and she won a county library award. And then she repackage that essay and she got a full ride to Harvard. So if it wasn't for librarians like David, and if it wasn't for the amazing Monterey staff and our great education system in Monterey. I mean, that's just one story of how far you can make it, and we're definitely low income. So she didn't get there because she knew somebody. She got there because she got a perfect on the English section. And also she is now librarian in Wisconsin. And, thank you, David.
Thank you. And thank you for graciously modeling what I just asked, which was recognizing our team. So thank you for that. I appreciate your comments. We'll go to the one public comments are online.
They lowered their hand.
And we're going to close public comment. Thank you all again for that. We'll now move on to general public comment. So this is an opportunity to provide public comments on anything that's not on today's agenda. So again, if folks are in the chamber, I ask for you to stand up to the left of the podium. And if you want to remain seated, if you could just identify yourself by raising your hand. So we have one, two, three folks, four folks not lined up right now. One, two, three, four. Okay? And then we're going to do a countdown for folks on Zoom to use the raise hand function to five, four, three, two, one. We have two. So can somebody math for me? Okay. So two minutes? Okay, let's do two minutes. Alright, we'll go ahead and start in the chamber.
Steve Lightfoot, drive around in that LennonMurderTruth.com van. Right now, we're being taken over by the communists, the world order people, the Bush, Nixon, Reagan, Clinton, Obama, Biden, Kamala Harris, et cetera. Trump almost got shot again right after posting, "I hate Taylor Swift," and so I want to help him out. She's a bimbo for the status quo. She's a showgirl on the radio. She's a bimbo for the status quo, everybody knows. She's a stage queen with her legs all a showing. She's the rage now. She's a big sensation. She's a bimbo for the status quo, everybody knows. Is Taylor Swift a communist rigging our election? Big Brother's propped up propagandists. Is that a real profession? She's a bimbo for the status quo. She's a showgirl on the radio. She's a bimbo for the status quo, everybody knows. She likes Stephen King, and that is just not right. Does she know he killed John Lennon? I think she just might. People beware. She's trying to scare you off your vote. She's a bimbo for the status quo. She's a showgirl on the radio. She's a bimbo for the status quo, everybody knows. She even helped King once before when he was in a fix. Let that bastard walk away with her PR tricks. They both could be together. A very real commie plot. Cold War was tricking us with everything they've got. She's a bimbo for the status quo. She's a showgirl on the radio. She's a bimbo for the status quo, everybody knows. Now, October 9th is John Lennon's birthday. It's your last chance, California, to demonstrate because December 8th, you're too busy shopping for Christmas to care. This is your last chance. I believe it's a Wednesday, October 9th, John Lennon's birthday. I need demonstrators to expose my evidence. Everybody knows I'm right. Everybody's feigning denial like only adults can do. Your kids can admit it, Stephen King. The adults are too jealous of me, too. I've got the colored space name letter to the editor printed before the murder. Gold print codes and time in Newsweek. We got to get this out until Stephen King is executed for what he did. You're all insane and in need of an exorcism.
So I have more appreciation for more city employees. Hans Usler, Kimberly Cole, and Levi Hill. I want to thank you guys so much for taking a meeting with us vendors. We really appreciate your time and your willingness to hear our concerns and our ideas and some of our practical advice from people who know the terrain. I want to thank Abraham Zavala Rodriguez from the Western Center on Law and Poverty for coming and attending that meeting with us. He brought with him years of experience in organizing and empowering street vendors. And our collaboration with the Western Center for Law and Poverty has given us all kinds of new strategies, community organizing ideas. And we're really excited to get started and to implement new ideas about how to organize ourselves, how to regulate ourselves, and how to go forward next year. Unfortunately, because of weather constraints, this vending season is basically over. So there's very few vendors left to talk to about the kind of changes that we want to make or the new ideas we want to go forward with. So I would just like to propose that, you know, the high season is the June and July is what most people are concerned about. And within June and July, there's just Saturday and Sunday when there's a lot of vendors, when kind of this stuff has to be figured out about who set up where and how closely we're set up to each other and that kind of thing. So I would recommend that, for now, we do nothing. I would recommend that we don't touch the ordinance at this time. And I would just like to advise the city council that the financial impact of doing nothing is zero. And the man-hours required to do nothing are zero. So it would kind of be more practical to just maybe talk about this next year or give us a chance to regulate ourselves because now we have an organization behind us who's going to give us more insight and strategies to organize ourselves. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Jim Burns. Thank you very much, Hans, meeting with us. We all know the formal economy has been having a hard time, and there's massive layoffs, store closures. The news, we see massive hire, we don't see massive hirings, store openings. So as a protective measure, communities have to start developing their own local economy. And as city council, we need to focus on creating more areas to facilitate that type of prosperity. In other words, we need to start creating a job base not dependent on corporations who could just close up shop because decision-makers a thousand miles away realize it's best for their bottom line. These same decision-makers are also automating. You see it in the checkout stands. Just like the ATMs of the 1990s got rid of our local bank tellers, these checkout stands are getting rid of our local cashiers. So what I'm saying is we have to grow a grassroots economy. And sidewalk vending is the way to do it. Sidewalk vending not only creates the space for people to sell the things they make, it also provides public space for locals to meet up week after week and make connections. You let three vendors set up, and I can guarantee you, a musician and a performer will spontaneously appear and put on a show because this is where people gather. The city needs to grow the grassroots economy in areas that are most congested. We have created such an area down at the Stanton Center. Locals are hanging out and making friendships and spending their money. And we vendors are generating our own city revenues. We pay for permits. We pay for parking. We pay sales tax, meaning the city is spending nothing on us, and we're generating tens of thousands of dollars for the city. So now we have called the Western Center on Law and Poverty to help us in Monterey. They're coming off their huge legal victory against the City of Los Angeles. And we didn't call them here to sue the City of Monterey. We called them here to help us vendors organize and self-regulate based on the wisdom that other vendors and other communities are doing. And it's been five years. We're just getting our legs under us. All we're saying is give us a chance. Don't change the city vending code. Let us come together at the beginning of next season and see what we can come up with. Okay? Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Wendy Brickman, President of Fisherman's Wharf Association. And I'd like to talk about the increase of sidewalk vendors on the causeway near Old Fisherman's Wharf. The confluence of sidewalk vendors, shoppers, tourists, and citizens on the causeway during weekends has created a significant safety hazard. We believe the city should regulate the time, place, and manner of the sidewalk vendors' operations by doing the following. One, set a safe path of travel for tourists and residents to enjoy the scenic beauty of the harbor. This means that there should be a path of travel that accommodates pedestrians, cyclists, persons with disabilities, and the ability of first emergency responders to quickly access a person in need. Two, in order to meet these health, safety, and welfare concerns, it is appropriate to limit the number of permits for sidewalk vendors and assign locations and size limitations for the sidewalk vendors to ensure that that safe path of travel is maintained. Three, sidewalk vending should not be permitted when there are special events in and near the plaza, such as Whale Fest Monterey, Fest Italia, and many others. Permitting sidewalk vending during periods with special events creates too great a concentration of commercial activity which unreasonably interferes with the scenic resource of the Custom House Plaza, the Monterey Harbor, and the ocean. So let's all strike a balance. Thank you for your time.
Hello. My name is Sherry. I'm a member of Fisherman's Wharf Association, and I hope that my comments will benefit not just our local brick and mortar businesses, but that the street vendors, locals, and tourists who visit Fisherman's Wharf. I want to thank each of you for seeking a balance with following state law and supporting Monterey street vendors while protecting public access, preserving scenic views, and ensuring safety in our beachfront areas. I want to quickly add that I do suggest that it's sooner than later because when it's later, you're in the middle of it all. So hopefully, it's sooner. Currently, we have vendors setting up tables as early as 2:00 AM, the dark hours of the morning, and leaving their tables. Regulations state time for setup and specifies tables are not to be unattended. But who checks on these empty tables at 2:00 AM Saturday and Sunday morning? Having assigned locations will eliminate this competition and safety hazard. Carmel by the Sea and many other California beach cities have adopted sidewalk vendor regulations and ordinances that regulate the number of vendors, the vendor's table size and location, and the time and manner of operating while remaining compliant to the state law. Hopefully, City of Monterey will consider adopting and regulating assigned locations, space and table size, and being consistent with each vendor, limiting the number of permits to reduce overcrowding in popular high-traffic areas and create a fairness among the vendors. This will reduce the unsafe environment in the dark hours of the morning, reduce crowding of the walking bike trail, and create a balance between right to do business and protecting the tourist right for public access, preserving scenic views, and ensuring the safety of our waterfront areas. Thank you so much for all that you do, and thank you for listening.
Is there an opportunity for rebuttal? No?
Hello, everybody. I'm Antoinette Saylor, and I am usually involved in some of the nonprofit public events on the Custom House Plaza, specifically Whale Fest. And also recently, I was working on some of the logistics for Fest Italia, and one of them being dealing with the vendors. Now, as you may know, Fest Italia has a lot of food booths and the like, which are therefore raising funds for the foundation. And we also have a handful of vendors which are just like you, the people. They're all little guys. They are trying to make a buck on the side, often selling their own arts and crafts, et cetera. And unfortunately, although Fest had a ton of huge audiences here, I've had some of the vendors tell me they did okay. And they were wondering, you know, all those people out there on the other side of the wreck trail, or even on this side of the wrecked, speaking from the plaza, people spent their money there, and then they come to the plaza and they don't have any money left. With Whale Fest, it's similar. Whale Fest does not exchange any money. We only have exhibits. We don't sell anything, but we give people T-shirts for donations. And I've had people come up and say, "Oh, well, we just bought this beautiful T-shirt right over there." And no, I'm sorry, but Whale Fest doesn't get the money. And unfortunately, this has gotten worse over the last two years. The number of merchants or street vendors over there has increased considerably. Maybe there are too many permits now. I don't know. People still get new permits. Many of them have more than one or two tables. And they've also now come onto the other side of the area between the plaza and the wreck trail, which sometimes puts them literally right up against the vendors or exhibitors on the plaza. We had to rent fencing just to separate it. And I would like to have people consider the point of view of the nonprofits for whom this is just a little extra income to pay for the costs. It's the same little people as are the street vendors on the other side. Thank you.
Hello, council members and staff. My name is Justin Barrett, and I'm representing the Monterey Bay Jade Festival, an annual nonprofit event held at the Custom House Plaza every June. I would like to comment on the sidewalk vendors who have set up outside the State Park area in the Custom House Plaza. These vendors, in the last three years, have become detrimental to our event and other similar nonprofit events due to issues of safety, aesthetics, and the ability to raise funds for our nonprofit beneficiaries. I would like to request that the city council consider defining the Monterey Bay Jade Festival and other events like the Fest Italia and the Whale Fest and other nonprofit special events within the City of Monterey as special events. And this would allow the establishment for specific weekends where the sidewalk vendors would not be permitted to operate within 500 feet of these events. These blackout dates would help the organizations regain the ability to effectively fundraise for the causes we champion. Thank you for your consideration.
Good afternoon. I'm Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'll make this short and sweet, you know, and hats to our city manager. My name is Rodney Riggs. I'm a member of the Fisherman's Wharf Association. We have spent a lot of money on advertising to get people to Fisherman's Wharf. The first and the last thing they see, I hate to be so negative, but it's a flea market that's been brought to our attention in the stores. The sidewalk vendors are largely from outside the community. Say they will lose their livelihoods, well, so will the employees that we hire. The first thing they do after a year of employment, we put them on health and medical. And that costs quite a bit of money. So we don't want to have to lay off our people that are with us, you know, for years to keep on their medical. The loss of business to the vendors means a lot to them. But lastly, please follow the policy of one table and make tough decisions. I mean, this is going to be a tough decision for the city council, Hans, but that's what you're elected for, is to make tough decisions. And it's going to be a tough one, but no sense of kicking the can further down the road. Let's just get it settled, and we all live with your decisions. Thank you.
Rod, was the sweet part intentional?
Yes.
Thank you. For those that don't know, Rod is a candy store on the water. So just for the record.
Alright, thank you, City Manager Hans, city staff, council, and mayor for listening to us today. My name is Lance. I'm a small business owner and co-chair of the CRBA. Being an entrepreneur and running a small business is not easy at any level. There are more challenges in the Canary Row and Wharf districts. We have to work closely with the planning and building departments, maintain our leases, pay business licenses, and pay into business improvement districts. We must comply with sign ordinances within the citywide sign guidelines. We must display consistency with the waterfront master plan. We must also comply with all requirements of the general plan for commercial land use, coastal commissions. And in more complicated instances, we may require to be looked into environmental impacts and go through the process of the Architectural Review Committee. Though all these challenges for small business owners face, we comply with these rules and regulations because we love, understand, and respect the vision of Monterey and know the impacts on tourism deeply impacts the city. We firmly believe that there needs to be more strict guidelines and ordinances for the street vending applications to uphold the vision integrity that the City of Monterey has built throughout the years. Without rules, regulations, and enforcement of the street vending, we risk compromising public safety and overall guest experience when they decide to visit Monterey. We encourage city staff and council to work closely with the business districts so that we can all ensure that Monterey continues to thrive. Additionally, all of these local businesses on the Wharf and Canary Row employ hundreds, if not 1,000-plus, local residents as employees who oftentimes count on employer-sponsored medical, dental, vision insurances, and retirement benefits. I fear that negative long-term impacts from the street vending could not only lead to reduction of these labor forces, but additional reductions to employer benefit packages for our valued employees. Thank you for your consideration.
Mayor, council members, city staff, thank you for this opportunity to participate in this open forum. Nothing that I've written today will rhyme, so I'm sorry about that. My name is Barry Ridock. I'm one of the owners of Escape Room 831 and Oscar's Playground. We are located in two of the city's business districts, both on Lighthouse and Canary Row. Tonight, I'm here to address the growing concern of the unregulated presence of street vendors in our business districts. And while our situation is not as dire as the other districts, proactive attention feels like the right approach to avoid further issues. There seems to be widespread confusion about the rules and regulations governing street vendors. Despite clear guidelines on the city's website, enforcement is lacking, and many seem unaware of how to resolve these issues in a consistent fashion. Here are some of the initial questions that pop out. Are there limits on the number of street vendors allowed in the city? What are the specific guidelines for conducting business on both public, being city and state property, and private property, such as that owned by Canary Row Company? What do vending permits look like, and are the vendors required to show them upon request? And where can the public access this vendor information? I have several other questions like that that I'd like to discuss in addition to the ones above. My business operates within the city's legal framework. I have permits, licenses, and pay fees to conduct business in the city and the state. The same transparency should apply to the street vendors. I propose a collaborative approach to this challenge. The city, the business owners, and the street vendors can work together to find solutions. The city, the business owners and the street vendors can work together to find solutions that benefit everyone. This will foster growth in harmony, avoid unnecessary conflicts and the straining of city resources. I'd like to follow up this speaking engagement with city leadership to schedule some working meetings, clarify the guidelines for street vendors, guidelines that benefit the vendors, the business owners, law enforcement and both code enforcement. Thank you so much for your time.
Hello, Mayor, City Council, Hans, staff. Couldn't put a lot together and thought on this, but just in general, when I go down to the Wharf area where there are street vendors, but it changes my feeling of Monterey. Monterey has got a very majestic, old, historic feeling to it. The residents have a real community feel. And I go there and it's just people I don't recognize or know, people from outside, and it's great. And I'm a small business guy. I'm as small as they get starting a big project. I understand trying to make it in business. But we have these guidelines, these rules, the control by city council, the rules of the state, rules of the city, local and the jurisdiction and the people themselves as to what they want. We sort of lose that when someone comes in from these little pop-up shops that they do. They don't have the real commitment. They can buy garbage goods and what do I do when I have a problem? I go back and look for their table? Did it move somewhere else? Is it another city? Do they really have the concerns as what's best for the community or is it more about their pocket? For myself, we really are a community that cares about each other. We need to focus on that. And when we bring these street vendors in, I'd rather not see them honestly, because I think it detracts from the beauty of Monterey, what it is. It's hard walking through the area. It's just the stuff they sell. I don't know. Maybe it's me personally, but I don't like a lot of it. And I think there's a great investment in this and the revenues we make in taxes and the reporting, how many of these are just cash businesses? We'll never know. We'll never know the revenue they took away from our community and cities. I really hope you might look at this. Again, I love small business. I want to support them, but I think we should follow all the rules from the zoning to everything to the top, health and everything, that the people can be protected in this city and get what they want. So thank you for your time today.
Well, Mayor, I'm here for a different situation. I've never met you before. I'm Robbie with Robbie's Ocean Fresh Seafood on Fish and Wharf. If people don't know me, most of you do. You got a picture of my hat on in front of Lou's as a matter of fact. I got that picture. The reason I'm here is because this is an ongoing situation at Municipal Wharf, number two, where my fish market is at, up in the depot parking lot. I left my list at home and on my desk, darn it, but I wanted to go again, reiterate on what's going on down at the Wharf. My vans have been vandalized recently. I just did another police report last week. I have graffiti on two of my big trucks. Before that, about six months ago, someone stole my van, used it in a robbery down on Canary Row when they stole it. I don't know if you remember, someone, I guess you guys might stole the ATM machine out of one of the restaurants, used my van to do it, stolen out of Monterey's parking lot. Three of my gas tanks on my truck have been vandalized where the gas lines have been cut three times. It cost me $1,500 to get those fixed. Batteries, three times, windshield wipers, tires, catalytic converters. This is ongoing and I'm paying almost $4,000 a year to park my trucks in your parking lot. I talked to my attorney about it. He said the city is exempt from it, which I don't understand why. I'm paying money to be in your parking lot and there's no security. There's not one camera or light in that parking lot. You guys did a great remodel on a new parking lot, on the waterfront parking lot. I counted 27 new lights. They all go into the new parking lot. Not one of them shines into the depot lot. So I'm here again to reiterate if there's anywhere in budget somewhere in Monterey. I know you're going to be doing a remodel on the building that I'm in down at the under Wharf number two. If there's some kind of funds to put a camera or even lights that run off of yeah, you know what I mean?
Solar.
Solar, thank you. That when someone does come by any time of the night, that these lights go on, maybe get a little deterrent for the parking lot because there's homeless people in the area. I'm not sure they're doing it. But it's just ongoing and it's costing me a fortune and hopefully you guys can bring it to your attention. Maybe just one camera and some new lights. Maybe that would be great.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have you connected with the city manager's office on this yet?
I may have. It's been going on for three months. I'm sorry, three years and there's never been any kind of
Okay, if you could just check with Nat here and we'll make sure that we follow up with you on the issue.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Thank you. Thanks for coming by.
Thanks, Robbie.
And sorry that this is happening to you. It's horrible. All right. With that, we will take it to our public commenters online.
First speaker is a telephone caller. Go ahead, please.
This is Nina Beatty. Last week, J.D. Sheldon of Monterey Fire Department did a presentation for Carmel City Council. They were the final city to approve the, what's being called the Forest Management Plan, which I heard when it was presented to Monterey City Council. I was very surprised to hear him mention or highlight the Santa Rosa Fire and the Thomas Fire almost as justifications for this plan that has been approved by the city here. The Santa Rosa Fire was caused by PG&E equipment and the Thomas Fire was caused by Southern California Edison power lines. Specifically, the Santa Rosa Fire was in part an electrical fire because of PG&E's restarters on their utility lines restarting the power when lines, high distribution lines had connected with low distribution lines. And PG&E's equipment automatically restarted the power, allowing this over voltage to flow into homes. Now, the problem was that PG&E also had smart meters on those homes and they blew out. As the San Francisco Chronicle reported, all these popping sounds that people heard, well, when the surge protection inside of a smart meter goes, it makes a popping sound. So all this over voltage was flowing into homes and buildings and igniting homes. And electrical fires burn far greater than normal building fires. So these are being used as examples for why we need to clear the forest. And as one Carmel resident reported, they are clearing the forest. That means all the vegetation, which the firefighter there called fuel. It's being taken out, which means habitat for the wildlife. There are no naturalists that were involved in formulating this plan. And someone needs to stop this, pause this plan now before we completely decimate the forests of Monterey, Carmel and Pacific Grove. We need a better plan in place and we need to go after the utility companies that are causing
Thank you. Your time is up. And our next speaker is Abraham. Go ahead, please. Abraham, please unmute and go ahead. Last call for Abraham. Please unmute yourself in order to speak on the general public comments.
Hello. Go ahead, please. Hi. Good evening, City Council of Monterey. My name is Abraham Zabala. I'm an advocacy associate with the Western Center on Law and Poverty. We co-sponsored both sidewalk vending bills SB 972 and SB 946, which effectively decriminalize sidewalk vending and most importantly, provided street vendors with a path to permits. We were recently in LA, involved in a lawsuit in Los Angeles to repeal no vending zones. The case upheld that cities cannot create no vending zones. On Sunday, I walked the Monterey Wharf, met Athena, India, a few other vendors, Jimmy. The level of organization was amazing. I've never come across an area of folks who have the leadership to ensure that new vendors who arrive understand Monterey ordinances. You know, Jimmy and other folks were telling new vendors where they could set up, what they couldn't do. I did not see the city out there, but I did see vendors actively helping each other out and understanding the Monterey ordinance for sidewalk vending. What I found amazing was the majority of organized vendors use Cashas apps that include local sales tax in their transactions, which I've never come across any vending area that does that. And I've been in LA, Anaheim, San Francisco, their places. So definitely vendors there are head of the curve and just wanted to remind folks that, you know, any regulation outside of the both SB 946 and 972 can be, you know, create difficulties for cities as they try to enforce certain things that are unlawful. State legislation is clear, regulating vending outside. These two state bills is unlawful and enforceable. For example, restricting permits is not allowed within the state bill. Regulating or restricting vending out of public animus is also unlawful. It must be done out of safety and health reasons. These are merchandise vendors where I guess that are super organized. A lot of cities are doing education first. In this case, vendors are doing education first, educating each other, educating business people, educating, you know, code enforcers. I feel that the city of Monterey is looking to have vendors that are organized. So thank you.
Okay. And with that, we'll go ahead and close a public comment. For those, this has been a big topic for the last few council meetings regarding this sidewalk vending. And I know that staff is currently working on a plan to figure out what next steps look like there. So I just ask folks to to stay tuned for that. We will be moving forward with some deeper discussions and we'll make sure that all stakeholders are able to participate in that process. So with that, we will move on to our consent agenda. There was a request to pull item number five. Council, do you wish to pull anything else?
Three, I need just opportunity to ask some questions.
Okay. Do you want to go ahead and ask those?
Sure.
Anybody, take care. While, while Councilmember Smith is looking for that, anybody else want to pull anything? Okay, whenever you're ready to go.
Well, I'm just looking on on our Zoom. Do we have the city attorney present?
Yes. Yeah, she's here. Sorry, I meant to announce too, by the way, that our city attorney is participating virtually, so is present. And then we also have Councilmember Hafa in the chamber now too, who arrived a little bit ago. So I just wanted to set that for the record.
Thank you. Yeah. So the question, I'm trying to follow this and it seems as though this is stating what we are limited by because of California government code. So regarding the eight, not eight U's, the short-term rentals. Past practice has been $1,000 a day. And it's been $1,000 for each of those days. So it, does that mean that this limitation by the government code affects that penalty structure? Or is it an offense that's actually every day and then there is a citation available for each day? So the question is about the short-term rentals. And also there's some references to some continuing work that will happen. So just wanted to get an overview of what the continuing work would be regarding this city ordinance.
Yes, thank you. I'm happy to answer those questions. For starters, this action that you're requested to take tonight is just to implement an ordinance that does not limit our penalties in the city of Monterey as a charter city to be capped at $1,000 per offense, and that might be daily. But tonight's action is not changing any existing amounts of any existing penalties. So that will be done or requested to be done in the future. This just by ordinance allows us to be exempt from the government code cap limitation so that we have more flexibility and the council can decide for itself if it wishes to increase certain penalties beyond that statutory threshold or not. So it just, it enables more flexibility in your assessing penalties, determining the amounts.
Okay. Yeah. And I wanted to get that on the record because partly it's, the educational effort is that I want to make sure that no one thinks that we are limiting our assessment of illegal activity such as short-term rentals. So nothing changes on that enforcement level.
That's right. That's right.
Okay, great. Mayor, that's the only comment and statement I have.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Thank you for that. It was a good question. Any other questions on that one while we're here? Okay, so there's, we're only going to pull item number five. Let's stick out to the public. So this is an opportunity to provide any public comments on any consent agenda items or request an item to be pulled. So I will check with the chamber first. Anybody in the chamber wish to speak on the consent items? Not seeing any takers, so we'll check online. I'll do a countdown for folks to use their raise hand function to five, four, three, two, one. And there's nobody online, so we'll bring it back to the council for a motion and deliberation.
I'll make a motion that we approve of agenda items except for item five.
I'll second that.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Hafa?
Yes.
Councilmember Barber?
Yes.
Mayor Williamson?
That's a yes for me. And then with that, we'll go to the item number five, which was pulled from the consent. It's to authorize Flock Group Inc. Automated License Plate Recognition Equipment Purchase and Three-Year Service Agreement with the option to renew for an additional two years for a total of $651,900 and authorize the appropriation of Neighborhood and Community Improvement Program funds to fund the project. With that, I'll pass it to Hans for staff presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've asked the police chief to give a brief verbal report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. City Manager, I'm Dave Holber, you Chief of Police. Today I'm presenting on item number five on the agenda to one, seek your authorization for the procurement of Flock Group Incorporated Automated License Plate Recognition or ALPR Equipment Purchase of a three-year service agreement with the option to renew for an additional two years for a total of $651,900 spread over five years. And two, ask for you to authorize the appropriation of 2024, 25 Neighborhood and Community Improvement Program funds in the amount of $130,000 to fund the project. Over the last nine months, the Monterey Police Department has engaged in a vigorous outreach process to explain and request a fully functional ALPR system and to provide for public comment at a regularly scheduled public meeting of this governing body to ensure we're in compliance with the California Civil Code. Starting on November 21st, 2023 with a council presentation, two town hall meetings on January 22nd, 24 and February 8th, 24, and a second presentation to city council on April 2nd, 2024, where council directed that the Monterey Police Department proceed with the implementation of an automated license plate recognition program. That after a year into the program, the Chief of Police bring an ALPR report to city council. That the ALPR audit report be shared with the city attorney by the Chief of Police and that any changes to the policy be brought to the city council for approval. Based on that outreach and direction, we proceeded through a process to procure the ALPR system, which brings me before you today for your approval to authorize a procurement of the Flock Group Incorporated and utilization of NCIP funding. The total cost of $651,900 is spread over five years for the initial installation and three-year service agreement with the option to renew for an additional two years. The costs are $145,900 for the first year of installation and service and $126,500 a year for each of the following four years. Two, NCIP projects would contribute to the purchase of the system. NCIP Project NIP 2313 was already approved and funded at $40,000 by city council on September 20, 2022 to provide for security cameras in the Del Monte Beach area. Additionally, the NCIP committee has recommended that the city council approve and fund the purchase and installation of ALPR cameras in neighborhoods across the city during the FY 24, 25 NCIP cycle in the amount of $130,000. The proposed vendor, the Flock Group Incorporated ALPR Camera Solution, has addressed privacy concerns by creating systems that identify vehicles, license plates and/or makes the models of vehicles, but not vehicle occupants. The Flock ALPR system would not capture personal identifiable information. It would only capture the images of vehicles and license plates already visible in public. All MPD users, Monterey Police Department users, would be provided with training related to the legal requirements, privacy concerns, policy mandates and system usage prior to being provided system access. The Monterey PD Command Staff will perform regular audits of the system to ensure collected data is secure and being used in accordance with the law. The system will be further secured with the city's identity and access management system and the city's cybersecurity monitoring solution. The data will be encrypted and securely stored with an encryption government-rated cloud provider. Implementing technology of this type will provide the Monterey Police Department, the most contemporary technology, to assist in identifying those involved in crime, including violent crime, retail theft, vehicle theft and other criminal activity, and additionally, assisting in locating kidnapped and missing persons. Many communities in Monterey County, including Carmel by the Sea, Pacific Grove, Seaside, Sand City, Marina, Salinas, and the Monterey County Sheriff's Department jurisdictions are utilizing Flock ALPR technology and finding success in apprehending suspects and deterring crime. Staff requests city council's authorization to use NCIP monies to fund this program and to contract with Flock Group Incorporated to purchase the Flock ALPR system that includes cameras, solar panels, installation, maintenance and quality control of the ALPR camera system.
Okay. And with that, we'll bring it to the council for any questions. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Chief. That was a lot of information. Couple of questions, and I may have missed this. Did you mention an audit? Did you mention an audit, an annual audit?
Yes.
Can you talk about that a little bit?
So the Monterey Police Department Command Staff will do audits at least annually. And as you directed at the last council meeting that we discussed this, I will share that audit with the city attorney.
Got it. Well, and and this might be a question for staff. Will there will there be opportunity to bring either annually or or periodically just information about how the system is doing and, you know, any metrics that you think might be relevant for the public?
Absolutely. So two things. First off, we will have a public facing aspect on our webpage that specifically relates what we're doing with ALPR and what we are looking at. And those kinds of things will all be publicly available on our website through flock. That is something that that company has designed for these specific needs. And and so that's how we will look at that going outward. Additionally, at the last council meeting, council directed that I bring a report to council a year after implementation. And so I'll probably marry that with other reports that I do about the April timeframe.
Sounds good. Thank you. And last question. For the renewal, is that something that would be coming to council for it would be?
So this request is for a three year contract with the option for two additional years. So it's a five year contract. And so you would be approving that five years. And in so doing, obviously, when we're dealing with vendors, the norm is three to five years so that the prices don't increase the next time that we work with them and that kind of thing. It's also difficult to try to work through technology if we're having to change that every year or so.
So it's really a five year contract.
It's a three with two additional aspects that we could increase for, yes.
So say that again. Two, got it. Okay, that's it. Thank you. Please.
Chief, could you confirm my understanding was that the the incident involving the armed man in Palm Beach who was apprehended? They, the report I heard was that he was apprehended as a result of this technology. Is that your understanding also? I just thought it was kind of, at the time I thought, wow, it's interesting that we're moving forward with implementing this similar kind of technology.
Yes, so it's my understanding that that's how they they caught that subject. And and obviously, in the previous times that I've come before council, we had a whole bunch of examples of times that we've been able to utilize that as well as law enforcement agencies that have found missing persons or perhaps persons that were kidnapped because we put those plates in the system as well.
Did you have any questions?
No questions.
Oh, sorry, Dr. Barber. He told me to.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Chief. That was awesome. And one thing that I just had a question about is was there an RFP for the vendor? Or was that something different?
Certainly. So we utilize what's known as a piggyback through the Redwood City had already previously worked through a contract process and our city policies and procedures allows us to use the piggyback. And oftentimes we find that we get a better amount of money that we're paying because it's already been negotiated for a bigger group of people. So we use what's called a piggyback.
All right, thank you so much.
How could you describe how? Because what I'm assuming is that the cameras are going to be installed in different locations throughout the city over the five, three year, three to five year period. How are the places where those are installed prioritized?
So we've already determined that's how we came up with the pricing was where those cameras will go. And what we did was we sat down with our staff and we looked at and and with the vendor who told us the best way to set those up. And so those cameras, we pre identified where those cameras will be on ingress, egress and truly anywhere that if somebody came into the city from somewhere else, we could see where they came in and where they're leaving. But we also need cameras in on the interior so that we can identify if they were close to those areas. Last time I came before council, I had mentioned a case where we had a robbery of the sunglasses hut on Canary Row. We only had a description of the people in the car. And we had video from that area of that car. The Pacific Grove Police Department was able to put that description of the car and look at their cameras as the car was leaving because it went up on David. And we're able to see the license plates as it got to the top of David, which enters in into Pacific Grove. And we're able to identify that plate on that car so that we could eventually apprehend some of the suspects that were involved in those cases. So that's just an example of kind of putting these in different places throughout the city so that we can see where the folks are when they're not only involved in violent crime, but also things like catalytic converter thefts and those kinds of things. So if we just have them on the in exterior of them coming and going, then we can't show that they were on a certain street where that catalytic converter theft occurred.
Is it, is the installation plan going to be something that's shared publicly where so folks can kind of know when and where the cameras will be installed?
Absolutely. And I think that might be, is that on the mapping that we put on the web portal? That shows the locations? Yes. So it shows the locations where they are, but absolutely we'll we'll be glad to to show that. And and these cameras, not like they're hidden. If you drive through Pacific Grove or Seaside, you'll see them, the the cameras in in various places.
Thank you, please, Chief. I think that's it for questions for now, so we'll go ahead and take it out to public comment. So checking in with the chamber, anybody in the chamber wish to speak on this item? I have one hand up in the back. Anybody else? All right, let's check online. But why don't you come on up, do a countdown for folks to use a raise hand function to five, four, three, two, one. And we have two folks online. So we'll go ahead and start in the chamber.
Hello, Mayor, staff and city council. Bob Fallis, resident of Monterey and developer Canary Row Plaza. Firstly, I want to say, gosh, like every government agency or in Monterey, it's just impressive and our police force is anything is just amazing. So anything to support them. Obviously, this could be a very great system that could really help solve many issues and make it easier for them, even as a deterrent to turn if people know it's out there. Unfortunately, I did read the book nineteen eighty four and a few other things going on in our government and always worry about that. So with those concerns in mind, no matter what, I say, go for it. But let's, I do have concerns that it's only used for things that are for, you know, criminal justice and bring things around that it not be used. And as much as I might abhor family disputes and let's say someone's having adulterous things, I don't want their lawyers to go in and grab it. I think it'd only be used for law enforcement reasons. I don't want any other reasons outside of that, be it legal, you know, disputes between people or the government even just wants to check up on somebody only for legal law enforcement for our great police force here in Monterey. Thank you.
Our first speaker on Zoom is a telephone caller. Go ahead, please.
This is Nina Beatty. I had written requesting this be pulled and wanting a full presentation. One question, there were a number of questions that were not answered by this presentation, including the ability to identify pedestrians or bicyclists around vehicles, the square footage of area that's going to be filmed. Information on the vendor, who are they, where are they located? How big a company is this? The location where the footage is stored, it's in the cloud, which means it's in some warehouse somewhere, air conditioned warehouse with lots of computers. What protections are from hacking cybersecurity? We all know from the credit cards to banking systems to get broken into routinely. And people's private information is is available to whoever is doing the hacking. And protections from stalking. These systems have backdoors and they can be accessed, that information can be accessed by those who know how, including government structures. And people can be watched and followed throughout the city as far as where what their activities are. I think that the ACLU, which was put forth as a possibility to look at even just the accounting of the yearly accounting of the data should be involved because that organization cares about civil liberties. How is this data transmitted from these cameras? Is it via wire or wireless? Because it's even much even more vulnerable if it's transmitted wirelessly. And is it constantly filming? I've opposed the surveillance system. I'm a, I've certainly been a neighborhood watch person as far as watching my neighborhood and alerting the police when there was an incident in my neighborhood. I care about the safety of residents, but not at the at the risk of our personal freedoms. This is, there's a lack of community accountability for the system. And I'm troubled that most of the council went along with it when it was first proposed. Other cities going along with the system is not, is not convincing to me. This is a major infringement on our civil liberties and our privacy as we as we go about our business in the city, our private business in the city. And that there's not more concern but fear instead of of logic, fear is being used to drive the system and has been in the other cities. That that this is going to protect us so much more. Well, as the previous speaker said, nineteen eighty four and other books and other non essays through the years have been very clear about the threats of using fear to drive policy, especially when our civil liberties are at stake. I do not agree with the surveillance system and I think it's a dangerous step of the city.
And our next speaker is Esther.
Good afternoon, everybody. I wanted to say I'm I'm actually happy to see that we are going to fill this gap that we have on the peninsula with the cameras being able to now be all over so that we don't have to have this big space between PG and and Seaside. I also want to make a point that we have been, we are actually in a
Esther, you still with us? Esther, we lost you. If you can hear me, we can't hear you.
Lower as well as our local. Hello?
We we lost you for about twenty seconds. Do you want to, you want to start your public comment again?
Oh, okay, yeah, sorry. I don't know what happened there. I thought I thought it was good. You didn't hear any of it?
We we heard maybe the first like twenty, forty, twenty, thirty seconds, so go ahead.
Okay, well, so in that, I'm hoping that you you heard that I'm happy that this is going to fill in the gap on the peninsula. But I wanted to also point out that this shouldn't be misconstrued into something that we're putting in place because we have this an increase in crime. Because that is not the case. I think this is a good tool for us to partner with our neighboring cities. But we have data from national and local that crime is down. So those that are taking an opportunity to use some sort of fear mongering to weaponize the fact that crime is on the rise for whatever reasons, political or otherwise. You know, that is absolutely not true. And I'm hoping that 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 fact is put out there more by our excellent police department. You know, our police department is above board and I have zero question on how they're going to use whatever information they gather from that. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands that our crime is down and it's down because we've got a great police force. And why wouldn't we want to give them an additional tool to keep doing the great job that they're doing? So thank you for passing this and giving them the opportunity to do more for our city. And that's all I have to say about it. Thank you.
Okay, and I think we're done with public comment. So we'll bring it back to the count, close public comment, bring it back to the council. And maybe we can have the police chief come up and try to answer some of the questions that came up from Ms. Beatty and and I tried to jot down and I think I captured them all and I can repeat if necessary, but there was, there was pedestrians, bicyclists, there was the questions around the vendor, around cloud footage stored, cybersecurity, protection from stalking, how it's transmitted wired versus wireless. And then in the question around, is it constantly filming?
So I honestly, I think that I've addressed all those issues. I specifically wrote a paragraph to the way that this is is the proposed vendor deals with all of these issues. I, the, it's not constantly filming. What happens is it captures the license plates as the cars go by. And as I related, it would only capture, not capture personal identifiable information. It would only capture the images of vehicles and license plates already visible in public. As to the management, it's secured with city's identity and secure and access management systems and the city cybersecurity monitoring. I think the caller spoke a lot about things that could happen. I would point out that as she related, that could happen with any system that we're using through banking or anything else. This is secured with the most contemporary means of doing that. And in relation to her comments about concerns about civil liberties, I share those concerns with her. As somebody whose family is in this community, I want to ensure that we're protecting civil liberties as well. And the law is very clear on how we do that and we're complying with all of those things.
Could you clarify regarding the question around pedestrians and bicyclists? As I understand, if they happen to be passing by in the camera, they it could happen. It's not obviously the intention, but if you could just clarify that question.
So if a if a car is driving by at the same time that there's a pedestrian there, it could capture their photo, but it's not storing that information. What it's storing is the information about the license plate and the car, not the person.
Okay.
And I don't have the, we would not have the ability to search that for the person. It's only for the attributes of the car.
And then, oh, I think Kristen.
That's okay. I'm, I I have a Kristen, thank you.
Okay. And then there was a question around stalking. I know, again, you said you you addressed some of this, but I think that was one of the other questions that was asked during the public comment.
So I I think the point, I I'm not clear on what the point the caller was making. She was concerned about stalking. So as as I related, there there's law that relates how we have to access this and the training that would go on. So it's very clear in my policy that the officers and I think one of the other speakers addresses, it's only used if there's a crime that we're investigating. So in other words, I can't go in it and look up what somebody's done unless there's a crime related to the reason that I'm looking in it. And I have to put the reason that I am reviewing it for. So I agree, it it should not be used for stalking. It should only be used for investigating crime.
Okay, and then the last question, I think, was around how it was transmitted, whether that was via wire or wireless.
So Kristen, I will ask you that that one question. So Kristen is with flock. Can you answer that one question, how it's transmitted?
Certainly, that's over cellular network.
Thank you.
Thank you for answering those questions, both of you. And then I do just want to relate to one of the comments that Esther made regarding the crime levels. And I'm just wondering if you could speak to that in regards to the trends and what that looks like in the city of Monterey.
So I I had had a discussion with Esther where she had asked me about, I had previously published the crime trends in Monterey. And what happened was about two years ago, we went from the uniform crime reports to the Nibers Cybers, which is a national incident based reporting system and the California incident based reporting system. As a result, crime has been somewhat redefined. And so where we used to have uniform crime reports and and as I mentioned to Esther, she could look at our the information that we have online, that shows the years before they started Nibers and Cybers. And what we see actually is that crime is cyclical. It goes up, it goes down, it goes up and it goes down. And so in specifically looking at crime in Monterey, as as I shared with Esther, it's very difficult to look at what happened with the UCR reports and now compare that to Nibers and Cybers because there's different definitions. So we kind of have to start looking at now that we have Nibers and Cybers, we can look at that. So looking at that data, those data points is difficult for me to say where exactly crime is.
Thank you, please, Chief. And then we'll bring it back to the council for discussion and a motion.
I'll make a motion if there's no discussion. Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve of agenda five, authorizing the expenditure for the five year contract for license plate readers.
I'll second that. All right, any other discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Yes.
Councilmember Barber.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
And Mayor Williamson.
That's a yes for me. And with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn to Ocean View Community Service District meeting. And I'll pass it to Chrissy.
Unmute. There is nothing new to report in the update and it's all set forth in the agenda report. But if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Any questions from the council? Yeah, Chrissy, I know maybe a few, a few months ago or so, I think this was going before the coastal commission, or maybe it's going to be happening as far as their development permit and the permit that would, that they need in order to have their small D-sell. Do you have any information on that? Has that actually been decided by the coastal commission or is that upcoming?
Let me check something real quick. And if Bob Fallis is still in the audience, he might have more up-to-date information on this. What I had ascertained is, I'm not sure, I'm not sure of the status of this before the coastal commission right now.
Okay, thanks. Maybe we'll hear from Bob during public comment.
Yeah, Bob, you can come on up. I think we're gonna jump to public comment here in a second. Anybody else in the council have questions?
No.
Let's take out public comment. Anybody in the chamber? We have Bob. All right, let's check online. I'll do a countdown for folks to use raise hand function via Zoom to five, four, three, two, one. And we have nobody online, so we'll take it to Bob.
Hello, city council, mayor, everybody. After seven years, here we go again, was another quarterly review of status. I'll tell you that I'm still resilient. It's very quite difficult after eight years of working on this. I came in to keep this alive and we're determined more than ever. I'm as rigid as a nail. In fact, I have my nails. I found the first time on the property, it's over a hundred and ten years old. And as much as I carry it everywhere to remind me, I'm gonna fight this battle and we're winning slowly with coastal. The Superior Court came back with a review of the case and made an order. We're writing up the final writ of mandamus and we did win. Sadly, not fully in the way we should and we have the opportunity of appealing that. The courts apparently, because this is a big elephant in the room, the desalinization plan is scary even for the judge that he doesn't want to rule on it. He basically said, which is really detrimental to the commercial lending industry. He said coastal commission can decide anytime, pull back a permit, do what they want. They don't have to recognize an owner. And this is my interpretation of reading his report. You can read it online or I can present it to you. But basically gave him full authority to decide to do as they want. Well, that makes it very precarious for a lender. I could commit to lending a hundred million dollars on the project and find out last minute that the coastal commission changed their mind and they lose it. How can a lender take that risk? What we did win on was the fact that they did not allow enough time when they rushed the whole thing of tailing a change of circumstances. The judge ruled that there is no status, no requirement in statutes that they give us a certain number of days. Ten days is allowed for a coastal development issuance permit. They have to give ten days notice prior to the hearing. They only gave us nine in this case. They themselves weren't really ready for our report. So the judge ordered that they go back. They vacate the previous order of change of circumstances, which puts the intent issue back in place. And they have to go through another series of reviews and doing a change of status of the circumstances. We feel we can overcome that with reports and all, and we're looking to do so. Worst case, we just appeal the case and go back there. So there's a possibility we could get this moving forward in two months, maybe, let's say, or it could be two years. But no matter what, we're determined to do so. If people can go and write to coastal commission, we probably had a hundred letters go there. The city themselves wrote it. It's very important. There's over twenty-two great things that occur by doing this development project. I'm very much environmentally conscious. I want to save that and do that. But coastal is becoming a real problem for every city up and down the coast. If you go to Monterey BS Coastal, which is Montereyversuscoastal.com, you can get a sample letter, see all the positive things we do, see what the project's about. Again, I'm always open to make any changes for the good of the community. But we're more committed to effort and moving this forward and hopefully we might get it resolved soon. Don't tell coastal that. They'll be very upset, but we're gonna win. And I appreciate your time together and the efforts that you all give me. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the council. Any last comments?
I could just add procedurally, at the time I wrote the agenda report and Bob did touch on this a little bit. They prevailed, as he noted, at the superior court level, but the final paperwork has not been issued that I can tell. So the court judgment and writ of mandate will direct the coastal commission to have a redo of its hearing. And that paperwork hasn't been issued by this Monterey Superior Court, at least as of the time I had written this report. So it hasn't quite made it to coastal again yet.
Thank you, Chrissy, for the additional clarification. Okay. And so with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn back to the council meeting and get into our public hearing items. Item number eleven is to adopt the FY twenty twenty-three, twenty-four consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, also known as CAPR, for the community development block grant, CDBG program and authorized submission to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. With that, I'll pass it to Hans for staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an annual report that we are presenting to you. It basically tells you what we have done in the past and what we intend and how much, how we spend the funding. And Jacob will present to you what we did in twenty-three, twenty-four.
Good afternoon, Mayor Williamson and city council members. Thank you for having me here today. As Han stated, I will be presenting on the CDBG consolidated annual performance evaluation report, also known as the CAPR for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. So the CAPR reports the city's progress in meeting community development block grant housing and community development goals. The summary of the year's program funding is usually also a purpose behind the CAPR as well, too. It is due to HUD on September twenty-eighth of this year. And all required notices were sent out regarding the CAPR. Staff also provided the draft CAPR to planning commission to review. And planning commission moved to approve the report for submission to the city council. This next slide is going over the annual funding review. So this is the amount that we received through the program year in CDBG entitlement grants and program income. And then the next is a chart that breaks down each of the activities and programs that were funded for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. This includes planning and administration costs, public service grants, home repair grants, purchase and resale, and public infrastructure. Next, we're gonna go over our public service grants. We funded approximately one hundred and seventy-two thousand in public service grants for the past fiscal year. This assisted approximately one thousand nine hundred and eighty low and moderate income households and individuals in the city. Next is our CARESAC public service grants. We had two agencies, the Food Bank and Meals on Wheels, that were funded approximately a hundred thousand for this past fiscal year. And this assisted approximately six hundred and sixty-four low and moderate income households and individuals. Next is for our home repair grants. We assisted a total of five low-income homeowners in the city. And they were funded through home repair grants that include our Mr. Fix-It Grant, Home Safety Grant, and Home Accessibility Grant. Next is in regards to our rehabilitation through our purchase and resale program. So for our purchase and resale program, there were three affordable ownership units that were rehabilitated. And then next is for our public infrastructure. So our Public Works Department completed improvements to Laguna Grande Park. These improvements included installation and repair of streetlights, creation of four-foot wide concrete walkways around the volleyball court, repaving of picnic areas at the park. And we estimated that the improvements benefited approximately three thousand one hundred and forty-four people total and census tract fifty-three, block groups three and four, and one thousand six hundred and eighty-six low to moderate residents in the city total. Also included a couple of pictures. This is the before and after of the concrete walkway around the volleyball court that was completed. Next is in regards to our planning and administration costs. So with our planning and admin, we, as a staff, met timely, timely use of funds and monitored subrecipient guarantees, managed our, the property at Casa de Estrella and monitored deed restricted units. And our recommendation is that the city council adopts the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for the community development block grant program and authorized submission to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. My presentation is now concluded. If you have any questions, I'm here to respond.
Great presentation. Thank you for that. We'll bring it to the council for any questions. Any questions? Yes, please.
Thank you, Jacob. I have a question about the rehab and resale program. I noticed that it's one of the smaller, smaller percentages. Could you speak on the strategy or the limitations there to expanding that?
Yes, thank you so much, Councilmember Garcia. So in regards to our, our purchase and resale. So the units, you know, purchased were minor rehabilitation units. And so usually it's depending on the amount of, you know, units that we are able to, you know, afford and that were rehabilitated. So, you know, over time, our properties that we do have that come in through the city of Monterey, usually they'll require us to take over and be able to rehabilitate and go through each of the processes once we acquire them to the city. And I could also pass it over to my housing manager, Anastasia.
Councilmember Garcia and Mayor. So the purchase and resale program, we, we complete our action plan at the beginning of the fiscal year when we determine how much funding we have available for the project. So it's part of that overall budget when we create the action plan.
Thank you. As a follow-up, could you speak a little bit on the strategy, why that was, you know, at the beginning of the plan, thought, let's do this as the smaller percentage? Or was there a thought like that?
Sure, Councilmember Garcia. So currently, this CAPR presents information about what was completed during the fiscal year. And so some of those units will not reflect and a lot, that budget will not reflect until the next fiscal year. So there's actually more budget spent, but we cannot put it into the plan until there's been a benefit. So CDBG is all about benefit. So next year, you'll see more of that benefit and a larger amount of money in the program. And a lot of the program is also based on how many units come up for sale. And that is dependent upon residents in the unit. Sometimes people pass away, usually is how those units turn over. And sometimes it's up to, you know, people leave their unit because they have to go into assisted living. So it's dependent on a couple of factors, but I believe next year, you're gonna see a whole lot more in that for the CAPR.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, with that, we'll go ahead and take, thank you for answering those questions. It's good to see you. And with that, we'll take out public comment. Anybody in the chamber wish to speak on this item? All right, we'll check online, do a countdown for folks to use raise hand function via Zoom to five, four, three, two, one. And we have nobody online, so bring it back to the council for motion and deliberation.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve our CAPR second.
All right, any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barber.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Yes.
And Mayor Williamson.
That's a yes for me. Thanks again, housing staff. I know that there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes regarding that, so appreciate all your efforts.
Could I just, could I please clarify? That was a yes.
That was a yes, not a here.
Thank you.
What I'm saying is, I'm, what I'm saying is here.
You're here for it.
Saying yes. Now. Yes.
Oh, my gosh. All right. Thank you. Thank you, our housing team. With that, we move on to item number twelve, approved planning commission recommendation to amend the downtown specific plan to eliminate minimum parking requirements for residential land uses. And with that, I'll pass it to Hans for staff introductions.
There will be two more opportunities to get the right vote with a yes or here, Councilmember Smith.
Ooh.
All right, we have two more agenda items ahead of us. And Levi Hill will present the next item. It deals with elimination of minimum parking requirements as they are currently prescribed in our downtown specific plan. It's a measure that, of course, as council knows, will be helpful for any future housing development that we may or may not have in the planning area of the downtown specific plan. And with that, I hand it over to Levi, please.
Thank you, Hans. Good evening, Mayor, Council, as Hans mentioned, I'm Levi Hill, planning manager with the city. And tonight we'll be talking about a proposed amendment to the downtown specific plan. And the staff recommendation will be that the city council adopt a resolution approving the planning commission's recommendation to amend the minimum parking requirements for residential land uses in the downtown specific plan. So a little bit of background on how we got here, as this group recalls, the city council approved the housing element for the sixth cycle housing element on July sixteenth of this year. And a big part of that document was to analyze constraints to residential development, both governmental constraints and non-governmental constraints. And through that analysis, minimum parking requirements were identified as a significant contributor to development cost and essentially a barrier to housing because of that. The housing element, well, this slide shows an excerpt from a study that was included in the housing element. And it shows that, the study showed that providing one parking space could increase moderate-priced housing cost approximately twelve percent. And two parking spaces could have an impact of increasing costs by twenty-five percent for lower-priced housing. And because of that, the housing element included a number of programs that are aimed at making adjustments to remove those barriers to housing. And one program was Program Two E, which was to revise the city's parking requirements. And that specific program was aimed at removing minimum parking requirements in areas of the city that are adequately served by public transportation to remove that barrier to residential development in those areas. Another intention of the Program Two E was to ensure the city's continued compliance with Assembly Bill twenty ninety-seven, which I'll talk about more on the next slide. So AB twenty ninety-seven was enacted in twenty twenty-three. And it generally prohibits public agencies from imposing minimum parking standards or requirements for properties that are within a half mile of a major transit stop. And that term, major transit stop, is further defined in state law to specifically address transit stops that have fixed bus routes that have service intervals of fifteen minutes or less during peak commute hours. And because of that, so that leads us to the city of Monterey. And as everyone here is probably familiar with the city's Monterey, Monterey's Transit Plaza located centrally in the downtown at Seminole Plaza. The transit service that's actually operated out of the Transit Plaza is operated by Monterey Salinas Transit or MST. So the actual service intervals and the routes are actually outside of the control of the city of Monterey and are dependent on the, on MST's ridership numbers and their demand. And those fluctuate over time. And most recently, I believe in twenty twenty-three, there were pretty significant shifts in the ridership and, or the route distribution through MST service area and the city of Monterey was affected by that. So because of that, the city's eligibility for AB twenty ninety-seven and those service intervals, they change over time. So it changes our eligibility. And that can be particularly problematic for the city when it comes to applying development standards like parking requirements for developments as they come in with, basically the rules might change over time dependent on influences outside of the city's control. So that takes us to the downtown specific plan and the proposed change in parking standards are targeted only in the downtown specific plan area at this time. And the downtown specific plan establishes those minimum parking standards for residential land uses. And it requires one point or requires a half space per unit. So for example, a twenty unit development would require ten parking spaces. It also requires that projects unbundle their parking, which creates a separate charge for parking than that of the leasing leased space. And then it also allows for parking requirements to be met through in lieu fees or parking agreements. I will note that in lieu fees do. Currently, they're assessed on a fiscal year basis and most recently for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five are approximately fourteen thousand dollars per space. So it's a pretty, pretty significant number. And that takes us to the, tonight's proposed amendment, which is pretty straightforward. This map shows the area in which the amendment would actually impact, and that's our downtown specific plan area. And then it's a pretty straightforward change to the parking standard, as you see on this slide, which would be the removal of the half space requirement. And some added text that provides that additional clarity that no minimum parking is required for residential uses. The planning commission considered the amendment at the September tenth, planning commission meeting after taking public comment and hearing. The staff report, they supported the amendment and forwarded it to the council with recommendation of approval. And to sum it up, the amended standards would ensure consistent application of parking requirements over, over time. And it will remove our dependency on M S T service intervals for establishing A B twenty ninety seven eligibility. And at a higher level, it would reduce constraints to housing by providing that enhanced flexibility in design and removing a significant financial burden to developers. And overall, it would be consistent with the objectives and policies that were included in the adopted six cycle housing element. And with that, staff's recommending that the council adopt a resolution amending the downtown specific plans, parking standards. To eliminate the minimum parking requirements for residential uses. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Levi, appreciate your presentation. Bring to the council for questions.
There's no indication of where the planning commission was in terms of their vote. Do you, could you tell me the?
It was unanimously supported.
Okay. And then as I look at the map for the downtown area, I'm, I'm assuming this, that the entirety of it is within a half a mile.
It is, that is correct.
So there's no areas that's outside of that half a mile of transit.
That's correct.
Yeah. And this applies to all residential, not just multifamily dwellings.
That's correct. As proposed, it would, it would apply to all residential land uses.
Okay. So in other words, if someone. Tore down a lot or tore down a house that they purchased, it was say on. Anthony Pearl, one of those homes, and they tore it down, they could rebuild the home, remove a garage. And basically build all home with no garage and get away with no parking required for that new home.
With the downtown specific plan area, that would be correct.
Downtown specific area. Okay. And under the A B ninety.
Twenty ninety.
Twenty, twenty ninety seven, there are no exceptions to this, correct?
There are, there are some exceptions that are laid out for a city to make a, make certain findings. That there would be a significant impact to the city's available parking or circulation, but the, it's a pretty high burden. For those findings to be made and the city would have to demonstrate that. And I don't have the state law offhand, but it's fairly nuanced.
So that burden would be for the ordinance, not for the specific project?
Uh, no, it'd be at a project to project basis for the city to make that determination.
So then we would still have the ability to. Say, okay, we're making an assessment for a particular property that does have adverse impacts. And then we would have to make that case for that particular project.
Under the state law is written, that's correct. With this change, that would not be the case. This would remove that parking requirement altogether. So there would not be an instance. In which the city would be able to make those findings any longer.
Okay. All right. So I have, Mayor.
Hey. Dr. Barbara, did you have anything? Okay. Thank you, Levi. With that, we will take it out to the public for a public comment. Anybody in the chamber wish to speak on this item? See one. Yes. We'll check online real quick before we. Before we go to Mr. Dayton, I'll do a countdown for folks to use a raise hand function via Zoom to five, four, three, two, one. And we have four folks online. So we'll go ahead and start in the chamber.
Great. Thank you very much. Kevin Dayton, Government Affairs Liaison for the Monterey Peninsula Chamber of Commerce. And we are in support of this change to parking regulations in the downtown. We did some inquiries. We haven't found any businesses that are saying, oh, no, this is going to be bad for us. And in fact, you know, having more people living downtown might actually bring them business and business that's repeat business. I'll give you an example, downtown Salinas, I'm also involved with the Salinas City Center Improvement Association. That forty unit redo of three oh one Main Street, the former Rabo Bank building, built nineteen thirty is the Salinas National Bank. No parking was required for that. And you go downtown right now, boy, what a tremendous change. There are people living there, people walking around. It's a big success. And hopefully the same thing will happen for city of Monterey too, as you have more people living downtown. In addition, I think back to two thousand eighteen and when the Monterey Bay Economic Partnership. Actually produced a list of ten specific things that local governments could do to try to improve the housing situation. And the parking minimums is one of the ten they mentioned. And although that's been six years ago, I still have that checklist in my mind and I'm putting the check in the box for city of Monterey tonight on this. So I hope it works out. Of course, you can always come back if it turns out to be trouble, but I bet you it's going to be good for the community and for downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dayton. And with that, we'll take it to our callers online.
So first I'm calling on someone from Land Watch.
My name is Laura Davis. I'm the Deputy Director of Land Watch and I will be providing comments on Land Watch's behalf. Land Watch supports the planning commission's resolution recommending that the city council amend the downtown specific plan. To eliminate the minimum parking requirements for residential land uses. Parking requirements increase development costs, making residential construction even less likely to pencil out and making housing even less affordable. We encourage the city council to support what our community needs, more affordable housing for people who work here. Removal of minimum parking requirements for residential development is an important step in accomplishing this. Parking mandates for residential development reduce density, encourage auto dependence and increase greenhouse gas emissions. On the other hand, reducing parking allows for increased density, encourages the use of public transportation and reduces greenhouse gas emissions. We encourage the city council to follow staff's recommendation and amend the downtown specific plan to eliminate minimum parking requirements for residential land uses. Thank you.
Next speaker is Esther.
Hello again. Can you hear me well this time?
We can hear you.
Okay, good. Um, so I wanted to point out a couple of things. We have an aging population and I think without a transit hub that is going to really be. Covering a specific, a bigger area than what we already have. Yeah, I think you need to consider that seniors are not going to be the ones that are going to be riding around on bicycles as they age. So I'm curious, I'm, I'm concerned because I, I see on Van Buren at the senior housing there. They don't have enough parking there. And sorry for city staff, but I'm going to out them. They park along that street. To go to work. A lot of them tie up the parking that the seniors would be able to use. That, that parking lot doesn't have enough parking to accommodate all their vehicles. So I'm concerned that. We have another project, opportunity site on Adams Street. Hopefully that will end up similar to the one behind City Hall that didn't sacrifice parking too badly. But I think we need to start thinking about big picture with our aging population. And one of the things that I think we might be able to talk about expanding is there's, there are programs. That offer Uber vouchers to seniors and a variety of things. And I, and I encourage everybody to start thinking along those lines, not just. Building more units, giving up parking to build the more units as we've got to get those six, you know, six thousand or whatever, eight thousand units or whatever. Because we absolutely have an aging population. Well, we don't have housing for. Infants and whatnot. There, the aging population is going to.
Hey Esther, we lost you again. Esther? She just dropped. Okay. Well, we can give her forty five seconds if she comes back on. Why don't we move on to the next speaker?
Next speaker is, I believe, Nina Beatty.
This is Nina Beatty. I'm asking the council to not eliminate the minimum parking requirement for lower cost housing, especially I, I'm asking the council to increase it to one space per unit for downtown housing development. The law doesn't really reflect what Monterey is. We are not adequately served by public transportation. And there are areas the bus does not serve as well as times the bus does not operate. This pushes the parking needs of people into the streets. So there's going to be a greater parking problem in downtown. Salinas has huge parking lots and a parking garage next to the Seine Beck Center near this residential unit that the, that Land Watch was speaking of. Monterey doesn't have the same setup. The proposal to eliminate minimum parking requirements affects households in which each member has to have one or more jobs in order to pay rent and need the vehicle to get promptly and quickly to those jobs. A bus does not work that way. And also people have jobs late at night. Or they attend classes. Women especially walking at late at night are not safe. And you talk about then add in the disabled component or the elderly component. It becomes difficult without a vehicle, a resident's also very limited in being able to shop and bring home bags of groceries or bags of supplies to where they live. Or be able to get to the doctor promptly. Monterey doesn't, I'd say again, does not have reliable and frequent mass transit or support systems that exist in Europe. And that's unlikely to change because people with money will continue to enjoy cars and garages, not see the need to fund good mass transit. Those without money will be required to find some other way, park their car some other place until they, even though they're the underpinnings of our society. The least the city can do, as I wrote in my letter to you, is help those people be able to get to work in a timely fashion. And that means that they need to have places to park their cars. When the city created a business centric downtown and removed housing via urban renewal. The city displaced longtime residents. It, it stated its priorities as well as damaging those families incredibly now. And the urban renewal required parking for employees and patrons of the new downtown businesses. You can't go backward and reinstate housing in downtown and fail to put in parking. It's just not practical. And with sea level rise in the specific area you're talking about. And no political will to address the causes to stop it or slow it, how long is the downtown area even going to be usable? So this was a poorly considered plan to take out housing downtown. And now to shoehorn it back in without, without parking, it's crazy. It just doesn't work. So please add, increase the minimum parking requirement to one, at least one auto, one space per unit for lower cost housing. Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Alia.
Hi, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Alia Elias and I work with Monterey Bay Economic Partnership. And for Monterey, Monterey Bay Economic Partnership, we would like to extend our enthusiastic support for the amendment to the downtown specific plan. To eliminate minimum parking requirements for residential land use for the city of Monterey. We believe this change isn't just a policy adjustment, it's an opportunity to make Monterey a place where more people can live. This is the type of forward thinking policy we believe that can help Monterey meet its housing goals and build a more vibrant, sustainable future. As a longtime resident in Monterey, I have seen the changes it has gone through in the past twenty years. And I believe that this amendment is a step in the right direction to create more economically and so, so a more economically and socially diverse community. And here at Embeb, we're excited to see the positive impact that this decision will have on the community. Thank you.
And we have Esther back. I'm going to edit the amount of time and give Esther her forty seconds.
Sorry about that. And thank you for giving me a chance to speak again. I just want to make it clear that I'm not, I'm not opposed. I just want to, I want us to start. Thinking about how we're going to address the needs of the people who are going to need parking that are not going to have it. And I strongly suggest that you walk over to the Van Buren area in the middle of the day and see how the parking situation is over there. And, and think about working with some nonprofits that, that already do some work with seniors providing vouchers. And we're going to have to plan on extending vouchers and things like that for them to be able to stay here as well. Thank you.
Alrighty, with that, we'll bring it back to the council for a motion and deliberation. Who wants to start us off?
Councilmember Hoffa. I would make a motion to approve unless, maybe I'll just get that out there on the table.
Please.
I'll second that.
All right. So it's been moved and seconded and any other comments, please.
Yeah, I just came up with a, another question if I could ask staff. I'm hung up on the, and I don't have the full text of the A B twenty ninety seven, but it refers to. And in adding the government code, it says generally prohibit public agencies from imposing minimum. What does that mean generally?
I believe that's speaking to the criteria that's laid out and the definition of the major transit stop. So.
Okay.
And then also that, I guess you could call it an exception path that I laid out earlier. That would be the instance in which a city could still impose those standards.
Okay, so. I feel like this agenda is it's all or nothing. There's no other option. And I never like to give up the option of that special case that may occur in the future. How do we have a policy that affords for the right units that are? That we say, okay, no parking because it's within that half a mile. But then we also have residential in this same downtown area that actually have homes with garages. And the opportunity to say, well, we need to think about them in terms of not overloading the density of. Then no parking in the areas that they did Webster, Alma, Anthony Pearl. And so it's not like the whole area is the same. So I'm wondering, is there some way to craft something where we can look at, we still hold on to an option for the future where we can say, there is a special case where we think that. We should say it does require parking. And also some cases where we say, generally speaking. We're okay with no parking because it's close enough to the transit. I just feel like there needs to be another option here. So I'm just wondering, is there another option? Or is it, we have to accept the twenty ninety seven verbiage?
So I think the, the only option to, to kind of make that distinction would be something, some language that. Reference the language in A B twenty ninety seven and specifically tied any exception to that. I, I hear your comment and basically. If, if we built in some exception process within the local ordinance, if it conflicted with that of what's in A B twenty ninety seven, it really wouldn't be enforceable anyways. So that's why it makes it rather complicated and kind of was, was one of the intentions of this ordinance was just to create that very. Kind of cement that standard for all development downtown so that there's not really that arbitrary decision being made and that we can ensure that we're consistent with the state law. But I suppose there, I would defer to the city attorney's office, but I, I suppose we could reference that language that. Creates that, those findings to be made in the state law and it could be, be cited in this standard, in the parking standard as well in the specific plan.
So was there any comments regarding that holding on to some kind of an exception with the planning commission discussion?
Not, not specifically on that topic.
Okay, okay. So the city attorneys probably heard my comment. So I would ask the city attorney. Is, is there a possibility of establishing? Something that we say? We can hold on to the, the, I would say, we hold on to the right of review for some potential. Future projects that may actually. Put parking in a conflict. I'm. put parking in a conflict. I'm specifically talking about the larger residential neighborhood. So the attorney, is there any, is there anything that's possible?
I'm going to take just a moment and pull up the government code and um, get back to you on that. Um, it, it might be a tricky thing to pull off. Um, so let me, let me reread that section and I'll come back in in a second.
Okay, and it may be just me. I mean, this may be a a majority vote that says we, you want to do this, but I'm just wondering if there isn't some other option within state law uh, that would allow us to go future. And uh, council member Barber's got her hand up.
Absolutely. Dr. Barber.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Um, so uh, first, thanks Levi. It was a great presentation. Um, and I just had clarification question. Um, and it almost, I think in public comment alluded to a part of it, but it didn't really come out. Uh, was um, this does not take away from ADA compliance policies, correct?
That's correct. That, that's, uh, those regulations are built into the building code. Uh, so all that uh, compliance with ADA would be done through, uh, it's still enforceable under the building code. And I'll just know, um, probably should have been, made this uh, comment earlier. It does, the, the change would not prohibit parking. And that's in a, that is a distinction that came up at planning commission was while not specifically requiring parking for residential uses, does not prohibit a developer from providing uh, parking, which is the likely scenario. It's probably unlikely given market-driven demand that we would see many developments come in that propose absolutely no parking for developments. Uh, this just would simply reduce that requirement for any minimum ratio.
Thank you so much.
I'm glad you said that. Thank you.
And if I ask a clarifying question of council member Smith, um, are you suggesting it would be better if the um, city went with the changes in scheduling with the mass transit?
I, I, I'm not quite sure I got all that. Could you repeat that?
Oh, sure. So um, part of the, part of the complication of this law that we're trying to address is that we can't prohibit um, we can't require the parking if there's transit operating within certain time limitations. And the issue we have sometimes is that MST changes those schedules. Um, it's not always consistent. And so the enactment of this um waiver of the requirement um, eliminates that predicament. And so I think, are, are you suggesting you would rather tie it to the schedules of MST?
Well, I, I guess it's tying it to the future availability of transit would be one point. It would be important, important. If the bus schedule changes, if the transit moves a slight amount, if, if something in the future happens, I mean, I guess we can always come back and we redo it. Um, go through the whole process and redo it again. But I just, I like what you said, the staff presented that, that's not a requirement of a developer. If the developer wants to put in parking, it's still their choice. So I think in my mind, that resolves my conflict where I would say I don't think we can carve out an exception that's going to make any sense, that's going to be able to be easily done. And I don't want to get us tied up with what another agency does with a bus route. And then we have to come back and revisit, revisit this again. So I, I think I'm gonna go back to saying that this is in compliance with the state law. It's within the transit district of a half a mile. A developer still has an option to put in parking if they choose to. And so, um, I think you made a motion already, didn't you?
If I could just offer something, I think probably most developers are going to look at market conditions and if parking does become
Yeah.
a bigger and bigger problem, they will probably want to include the parking even if it's not required because that would make it more marketable.
Right.
So I'm guessing that they will adjust to changing conditions.
Yeah, and I'm sure that there's some options in the future that some folks are going to say, we're going to build this because there's battery-operated onsite parking and my tenants have work-related further away than transit. So they're, that particular building and that particular development uh, answers a need. And that's not necessarily a bus route is going to answer their need. They need a vehicle. So, okay. After all that, maybe a repeat of the motion, so the public knows what your motion was instead of me just blathering on.
Well, and I, I have a few comments. Maybe we can do that at the end before we, before we vote. Um, one of the examples that you gave earlier was the idea of somebody with, with a single-family residential uh, unit tearing it down, building it back up. I guess I just wonder from a staff perspective, what is the likelihood that somebody that has a single-family residential unit in downtown would tear down a lot and build something that doesn't have a parking on it? Do you have a sense of what that would look like?
Yeah, I don't want to speculate too much. I mean, it kind of varies from, from site to site. We don't see very much of that. I can say that. Uh, there's, we don't see many applications that propose uh, the purchase of a single-family home for, for demolition uh, to be redeveloped.
Okay, thank you.
But they might tear it down, put an ADU and then their house.
Absolutely. And, and, and I think the fact that if they add an additional unit um, to their property, if it was just a single-family residential is a win. I mean, it's one additional unit towards our goals. Bless you. Um, so I just kind of, I, 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 I was tracking where you were going and, and I, and I was almost kind of open to the idea there of, you know, could we exclude single-family residential construction? But I, my, I guess my concern with that would be the prevention of opportunity to do an ADU or add additional units um, beyond that.
Yeah, I think it would be in conflict with state law.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so, I, I just want to thank staff. Um, I, I want to give a little bit more context and background um, for folks. So, um, MBEB, who were, uh, organization that we're a member, the city of Monterey is a member of, um, reached out regarding um, to developers that have properties in downtown. Um, and so we had a meeting um, with staff regarding um, this. And it was clear that there was an exclusion um, from the city of Monterey um, regarding AB twenty ninety seven. And so, um, staff was quick to identify that this was something that was easy for us to, to do. Um, and um, they made it happen relatively quickly. So I want to give kudos to staff for being creative, innovative, adaptive, flexible. All those things that we um, need in order to get housing built. So really, um, just an ex, extension of appreciation for staff, particularly because there's a lot of other things going on. And so even taking the little bit of time that it took for us to um, go through this process um, is much appreciated and, and clearly there seems to be broad support um, from businesses and, and residents alike. Um, regarding the, the route distribution for MST, um, it was unfortunate when MST decided to remove some of the routes um, in Monterey. But I think it's these types of policies that can allow the city of Monterey to express a need um, for MST to try to reprioritize routes to the city of Monterey and increase the uh, public transit opportunities for residents and visitors alike. Um, at the end of the day, this project is um, the, this proposal is allowing us to prioritize housing, um, particularly through infill projects as opposed to um, us looking at sprawl. So um, I appreciate and I, and um, echo the sentiments of um, our partnership with um, Land Watch uh, in that regard. Uh, I, I think this particularly to also help support um, our workforce and supporting our small businesses. So that there's opportunity for folks to be able to live closer to where they work and be likely to, be more likely to walk or bike to work. Uh, I want to allude to the comment that Esther was sharing earlier around aging population. And I think we always have to be mindful and, and um, adaptable to the needs. I think the question around ADA, and I think that Dr. Barber asked that question earlier, um, is relevant towards the conversation. Um, um, but in fact, I often see um, seniors out there riding their bikes um, and walking around our town um, more than young folks. And so, um, this doesn't mean that everybody's going to do it, but we have to be able to create the environment. And when we identify that physical fitness is an important value to the city of Monterey, how do we create the fabric that allows that to happen while still providing those opportunities for folks that might be disabled to um, move and function around within the city? Uh, the last point here is, we just, as was alluded to in the presentation, we just approved um, our housing element in July. It's still um, pending certification by um, the state. Um, but I, I think that this is a good sign to show the state that we're serious about meeting our goals. And we're not going to be confined to um, the, the, the policies and how they outline how we have to do things. So again, just wanted to wrap up my point by just sharing my appreciation for staff and, and taking the charge here. And um, doing exactly um, kind of towards one of the points that I made during the discussion of our housing element, which is our need to be flexible and adaptable so that we can meet the needs of our community and not just be confined to checking a box um, with the housing element process. That was a lot. So thank you for bearing with me. Um, any other comments? All right, with that, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Barber?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Williamson?
That's a yes for me. Alright, we'll go to item, uh, I'm sorry, there's a public appearance item number thirteen, receive presentation on downtown specific plan. Actually, let me pause here for a second. Do we need a break or do you guys want to power through and get this last item done?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, um, item thirteen, receive presentation on downtown specific plan implementation. Intersection of Cali Principale, Polk Street, Hartnell Street, Madison Street, ADA upgrades and pedestrian safety improvements. And before I pass it to Hans, I just want to say from the outset, this is going to be a pretty significant change for folks. I know that change can be difficult, challenging sometimes, so I appreciate staff coming out here early um, so that we can have this conversation with the public in regards to what things look like for this intersection. And I'm excited to see how this can make the city a better place. So with that, I'll pass it to Hans for staff introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And we thought it was a, a good idea to combine it with a previous item because of that, uh, it, it uh, means uh, change or implementation also of the existing downtown specific plan. Uh, and with that, I handed over to our, I handed over to our city manager, uh, city engineer. Congratulations to our city engineer.
Oh, that's quite the promotion. Alright.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Uh, my name's Andrew Easterling. And I'm going to continue on the, the theme of the downtown specific plan in Levi's presentation and provide a brief update on the intersection improvements at Cali Principale, Polk Street, Hartnell and Madison Street. So, it works. Perfect. So I'll give you a brief history of the project. Um, the city adopted the downtown specific plan in twenty thirteen. It was amended in twenty seventeen, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. We also adopted the ADA transition plan in twenty thirteen, uh, and that one's currently being updated and it should be presented to you, I believe, in October. Um, and then we began designing this intersection in twenty twenty two uh, to implement ADA upgrades in accordance with the, um, the ADA transition plan. So, a little bit more of the history continued. Uh, as the plans were being developed, we conducted a traffic study to look at the intersection control. Uh, that's the stop configuration at the intersection to review uh, the, the current configuration and see if additional changes were warranted. Um, and as part of the design process, as we were developing the plans, we looked at the downtown specific plan to make sure what we were doing was consistent with the specific plan goals, objectives and incorporate any changes we could that would make incremental improvements to the plan's goals. Uh, we finalized our construction documents in January twenty twenty four and went out to advertise it. Uh, the project was, uh, actually, uh, we opened bids and we awarded it to Chapin on April sixteenth, uh, twenty twenty four. So just recently. As we've been getting closer to construction, we've been doing more and more outreach to make sure that residents are aware of the changes that are coming. Uh, so that no one's surprised, even though as much outreach as we do, inevitably someone's surprised. Uh, we prepared notices, we mailed it out to the nearby properties. I've gone door to door, knocked on doors and had correspondence with uh, residents and business owners in the area. Our contractors left door hangers. We have email updates that go out through the city of Monterey. Uh, we also have a construction news webpage, so if you're ever curious what those cones are on whatever street, we should have updates on our website and you can um, have up-to-date construction news. Uh, and I've also had some uh, meetings with uh, project stakeholders that requested more information and more uh, and, and wanted to know more details of the project. Uh, through the public outreach process, I've actually compiled some letters of support and those were included as an attachment to the staff report. Uh, that was in your agenda packet. So I mentioned, we did a review of the downtown specific plan. Uh, we wanted to make sure that whatever we were doing was consistent with the goals and objectives of the downtown specific plan. And some of the uh, the goals and objectives that I felt were relevant to the project that we were doing. Uh, and these aren't all the goals in the specific plan, only the ones that I kind of cherry picked that I, I felt were relevant to the project. Improve the quality of the pedestrian experience, create a walkable neighborhood, provide pedestrian-friendly environments. Uh, do not allow auto-oriented levels of standards. Hey, you guys just did that. Kudos with the parking minimums. Uh, and develop and implement pedestrian transit and bicycle-friendly strategies. So, uh, I guess kind of more specific what the downtown specific plan is looking for. And, and some of the graphics, I wanted to screenshot some of these so you guys can see what the, the larger, the the, um, laser pen doesn't quite work. There we go. The larger goals of the specific plan are shown in, in some of the graphics uh, that I screenshot.
So we try to use the mouse if somebody can, just so that folks online can know where you're trying to target?
Oh yeah, that'd be perfect. Uh, so I'm going to, if you can follow my laser pen. So, I'm going to highlight a couple big major changes that are proposed in the downtown specific plan. And really, I think two big ones I, I want to highlight are the Polk Street uh, and Pearl Street. Uh, Passaos, the pedestrian boulevards and bicycle boulevards. So the specific plan envisioned that these two uh, street segments would be closed to vehicle traffic sometime in the future and create a space that's exclusively for pedestrians and bicycles. Uh, so we, we took these kind of long-range plans into consideration while we were developing the plans. The other thing that was probably relevant is the specific plan also envisions uh, roundabouts uh, on Cali Principale. Now, those were probably more substantial changes that we could take on in just this, this ADA upgrade project. But we did want to take these into considerations and try to maybe make incremental steps that wouldn't preclude this design in the future, but would still take into consideration. I'm going to continue. Oops, oh no.
Oh no.
I broke it. Okay, so existing conditions, uh, we could do a quick field trip after this council meeting. It's probably only about five hundred feet that way. But the existing conditions uh, are kind of highlighted here. You might have to squint. But we have, um, the intersection has three crosswalks and it's missing a, a crosswalk or a pedestrian connection between Hartnell and Cali Principale. Uh, we also, hopefully you can see this, we have a little bit of a site, intersection site distance issue where if you're coming from Hartnell Street and you're trying to make a left onto Madison, there's a, a pretty established tree on your left and cars coming down Madison can kind of disappear around the curve and then reappear um, as it's getting closer to the intersection. And vice versa, if you're in a car coming down Madison, people can be uh, stepping out into the crosswalk or cars entering the intersection that will also disappear from your line of sight as that, that tree kind of uh, comes closer into your side view. So that was one of the things we were looking at as we were evaluating this intersection. And then the pedestrian connection, trying to create that more walkable pedestrian-friendly environment. If you're a pedestrian trying to uh, come from Hartnell to Calippe, you might have to cross at least three times to get where you're going. And, and we were trying to think of, what could we do to make this a little bit more pedestrian-friendly and walkable and accessible? Oops. If you go back one more, I'm going to highlight one more thing. And the last thing I'm going to highlight, we have these slip lanes that are kind of convenient. If you're in a car, you can shave a couple seconds off your trip through the intersection. But it, it creates additional conflict points between pedestrians and vehicles that are perhaps unnecessary. So in kind of, we adopted a vision zero policy which prioritizes pedestrian safety over vehicle convenience. And we looked at those slip lanes as maybe low-hanging fruit to close that off, eliminate pedestrian conflict zones and get everyone teed up where you have better lines of sight at the intersection. So, highlighting that site distance issue. Uh, clearly, if you're coming down Madison, you can see that there's this tree here on your right. Maybe if you got good vision, you can see someone in the crosswalk. How many of you guys noticed our traffic engineer or public works director stepping out from behind the tree? Oh, I'm a tank guy. Uh, so we did have a little bit of a site distance issue. It comes standard in traffic engineering. You have to have the high vis. Um, so that was one of the things we really wanted to make sure we were addressing when we So that was one of the things we really wanted to make sure we were addressing when we implemented this design. And the last thing I'll show you is a video. The picture is a thousand words of videos, maybe a million. Here's what it looks like in the afternoon when the, uh, high school gets out, the high school kids just come down in hordes from, uh, Pacific Street, enter the intersection and cars start to stack up or will start to steer around each other and get impatient. What you may have missed is there's kids standing right here at that corner trying to enter the crosswalk as this guy is zipping around, trying to maneuver through the intersection. So we were taking all this into consideration while we were developing these plans. Thinking, how can we make it safer for the pedestrians? How can we kind of get the intersection in line with the downtown specific plan goals and objectives? And also make it all ADA compliant because that was the original purpose and need.
I'm just fascinated by watching my grandson walk in that.
That was your grandson?
Yeah. So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have a talk with him, you know? It must've been at 3:34.
Yeah, I, I think it was at 3:34 exactly.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, it was last Thursday or Friday.
Yes. Yeah. Well, that's his routine. So I mean, the, the pack, you know, everybody's trying to, you know, the kids are all overloading the intersections. He's not the only one.
He's not the only one. I had an interesting observation though, as I was kind of wondering if the, the herds of kids would really just gridlock the intersection. I, I guess since we're talking about it, the signal up at Pacific Street does a great job metering them. So as the, the kids come down in hordes, they come down in hordes and waves. And so, eh, when the, the signal at Pacific serves them, they all come down in waves and then it creates a gap and the intersection starts to flow again. So it, it was kind of an interesting observation, you know, because of the high school kids all kind of come down in the giant platoon. Uh, the, the intersection upstream actually kind of helps meter it and helps the intersection operate a little bit better, uh, as you get gaps in the pedestrian platoons. Uh, so this is the ultimate design we came up with. Some of the most notable changes are, we wanted to add that crosswalk, that gap in the network between Hartnell and Cali P. Uh, with that and the sightline issue that I talked about with the tree, it made perfect sense to, uh, turn that into an always stop. We hired a traffic engineer that did the traffic counts, did the analysis and determined that it was indeed warranted with the, uh, manual of uniform traffic control devices. And so that meets the criteria of the uniform vehicle code. So it was kind of a no brainer to go ahead, introduce that as a stop control and put in that extra crosswalk with ADA compliant ramp. So someone could go more directly to where they wanted to, to walk to. Uh, the other big change that you probably see is the slip lanes. We went ahead and eliminated those. In consistent with the vision zero, uh, yeah, with the vision zero policy. Uh, pedestrian safety is paramount and that is to be prioritized over vehicle convenience. So where cars could just kind of zip around here and make those turns quicker. They do have to slow down a bit, go through the intersection and have better visibility of pedestrians as they make those turn movements. And I think the last thing, oh, uh, last thing I want to touch on is we are going to lose some parking in here. Uh, but with the addition of this curb space on this side of the intersection, we were able to really offset the parking we were losing and reestablish new on-street parking on, on Madison. So we think these changes are consistent with the, the downtown specific plan. We are meeting the original purpose and need, which is making everything ADA compliant and accessible. Uh, but we're also making that more pedestrian friendly, walkable environment that is consistent with the downtown specific plan. So I know it's big changes, uh, and I'm happy to present to you this project and I'll open it up to questions and comments.
Thank you for the presentation. Great job. Questions, please.
Timing and period that it will take to get it done.
So the construction duration is probably going to be about two to three months. Uh, the start date is still coming in perspective. I'm doing some last rounds of, uh, outreach and community engagement to make sure everyone's aware. As soon as I have that dialed in, I'll coordinate with our contractor and get a start date. It should only be about a two to three month duration construction.
Okay. And of course, one of the stakeholders being the school, school district.
The school, and they were one of the people that wrote a letter of support that was included in the packet, uh, this, and the property owners in the vicinity. Uh, and the old Monterey Business Association. So we're trying to make sure that everyone's aware, uh, before we start construction.
Okay. And is there a possibility somebody from the school, they might have volunteer flag people that can help monitor their students as they cross and they get in so that they're able to help with their students?
I can ask the question. I don't know if I can make any commitments, but I can at least ask.
Yeah, because you know, there's many communities where they have crosswalk helpers where they're actually upstream before you get into the problem.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'm going to go to Dr. Barber.
Uh, thank you so much for that presentation. Yes. Uh, first of all, thank you for all the work that you're doing, um, to get that, uh, done and, and all the research. Because you're right, it's a big, big issue. Um, and I love the four-way stop idea and what you're doing there to create more safety. And of course with the ADA compliance, um, as well. So thank you so much for all the hard work that you and, and the rest of the department have done.
Okay. And then, uh, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrew, for the, uh, presentation. So I, I go through this intersection quite a bit throughout the week to drop off, uh, my kids at Monterey High. And, uh, one of them's actually in the audience. I might ask her to make some public comment later. Put her on the spot.
Hey, put her on the spot. You're going to get graded for this.
She has witnessed, uh, the type of activity in that intersection. And, uh, you know, it's, uh, I love the video. I think we also see the activity in the morning as well, maybe not as pedestrian heavy, but lots of, uh, cars, right? Trying to make our way to Monterey High. Um, I, I'm really happy to see that it's an, uh, always stop. Something that has happened to me, uh, more than once is that as I'm trying to make that left onto, onto Madison, I, I still look both ways because you have cars coming towards you on your left, but it's happened to me where folks are riding bikes towards me coming up towards, what would that be? Like towards the end, um, towards Pacific basically, right? So, um, I still have to look both ways and as cars are coming down on my left, they could come pretty fast, right? So kind of have to, uh, negotiate that. So having a stop there, I think allows a little bit more safety for, you know, maybe somebody riding a bike coming in the opposite direction. So I'm happy to see that. Happy to see the elimination of slip lanes as well. My question, um, was is there a possibility to, um, as, as, as you look at this intersection, maybe expand the, the focus of, of the activity that happens in that area? One, to look at the trail that comes from behind the library. Right? Because I think there's pretty good usage as well of, um, I know students, right? Going through there, especially in the afternoon. If, if the impact is not as high with students going through there, then maybe thinking about, um, formalizing maybe that path a little bit better or, or making it a little bit more visible. And I'm also thinking about rain, you know, the elements, it gets pretty muddy, I think sometimes. If it is a high impact, right, then maybe, um, closing it down and redirecting, uh, pedestrians over to the intersection. And by, by high impact, I mean, are students going through that trail and then just crossing the street over by the, uh, Fredo Joe's Alley or something like that, right? Or driveway.
Sure. And great question. Uh, so I, I think maybe in a future phase, that could be definitely something we'd want to look at as far as this project, rescoping it, expanding the footprint. Probably isn't feasible with our current timeline. But I do want to caveat all that with, um, the Hartnell Gulch, which I think is the area you're talking up behind the library. We do have a plan, uh, to kind of do a restoration project, remove the invasive species, plant some natives. And that does include, uh, some consideration of a formalized walkway. It's in kind of very preliminary planning phase, but we do have a concept, uh, for something on the Hartnell Gulch area. And I believe it's been an NCIP project nomination in past years as well.
All right. Thank you. And, and, uh, something I was going to add to that, but I think you've answered it already, but I'll just put it out there. Again, in, in the, uh, spirit of expanding the, uh, the focus here, also looking at the intersection of by the, uh, entrance of Monterey High, Herman, Lark and Madison that, yeah. And, and maybe as a whole corridor, right? Because I mean, students walk up through those two intersections and throughout the whole stretch, but I'll just put it out there. Thanks.
Okay. First of all, thank you for the presentation. Um, I often bike through that area and I, and I know it pretty well. It's, um, I would just share, it, it doesn't feel very safe, but for various reasons, that's an area bicyclists are going to use. If you're heading to the rec trail and that's kind of your, and you're coming from Old Town or Monterey Vista, you're going to head down Pacific, you're going to go past the library and then you're going to turn left onto Cali Principale. That's the kind of most direct way to get to the rec trail without having to stay on Pacific, which isn't very safe feeling. So it looks like, um, as we close off the slide street or whatever you call that, that's going to be blocked off. Would that be open for bicycles under this? And did we consider looking at maybe actually adding a bike lane along Cali P? So that's one question. And then the second is, I would just share as you go down Polk Street and you get to that intersection of Munros and Elverado, again, first of all, I'm glad we're kind of making that a four-way stop because it's a very confusing intersection and you tend to have the cars coming down Munros and, um, pedestrians crossing and nobody seems to really know whose turn it is to go. So I think this is a good change. But again, um, if you're, if you're bicycling from Old Town or Monterey Vista, and then you're not going to the rec trail. Let's say you're heading into the downtown area to go shopping, or maybe you're heading further over. You're going to take second, Second Avenue, I think it's called. So you're trying to get from there over to there. You don't want to be on Munros. So what you tend to do is take, um, I think it's, is it Polk? Is, yeah. So again, I'm just sharing that information. That's the route bicyclists, they're, they're really going to head down and take Polk kind of, and try to get over to Second Avenue if they're heading that direction or they're going to be heading down Cali P. Right now, all of that, it's, it's very confusing. And it's, um, and it doesn't feel all that safe.
Maybe add just one little highlighted information. Could you pull back that, uh, slide that had the downtown specific plan? It showed the roundabouts and the street configuration? I'll mention one thing and then I'll swear I'll be done.
Oh no, you're not done.
So, uh, and that was a great comment. Thank you. So in the, the downtown specific plan, it did envision Polk Street and, and part of Pearl being closed to vehicle traffic. So if you were trying to make that bicycle connection in the future, we are taking steps to future proof this design. But that would be kind of the, the low stress environment a cyclist might take. Uh, the, the thing we're doing, and I, I forgot to mention in my present, presentation to future proof our design a bit, is we're having to rehab the road. And because we're rehabbing the road, uh, we're going to sink some bollard foundations, removable bollard foundations into the street. We're not going to place the bollards yet. They'll still be available on the side, but when the time comes to pull the trigger, close the road to vehicle traffic, we don't have to re, rebuild the road. It's already been done. The bollard foundations are there. We just moved the bollards in. So that's one thing we're doing to future proof the design a little bit. Uh, it won't be implemented right away. Uh, but it, it was just something, a consideration I forgot to mention. And, and since you mentioned it, I figured it was worth commenting on.
Thank you. And, and yeah, and yeah, that's exactly what I, the path I was talking about, Polk to, uh, to Pearl is the one you would take if you're kind of heading into the downtown or trying to get across town. Thank you very much.
But, um, I wanted to make a, Alan, were you thinking of a three-way stop at Alvaro Munros and Polk?
Yeah.
Cause I don't think, you're not proposing a stop sign at Munros, correct? Yeah, that's outside of the project area. So I, I think that the stop was going to be at Hartnell.
And Well, I'll just offer, that's a very confusing intersection. Cars don't know where to go. You got pedestrians coming from all sides.
Yeah.
And, uh, if you're coming down, uh, Polk and you're trying to, let's say, either get onto Pearl or head down Elverado. You know, the line of cars never stops and, uh, people get itchy and anxious.
It's a blind corner too.
Yeah. And it's a blind corner. Thank you.
I want to make sure you weren't disappointed that there wasn't a stop sign there.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, and, and, but it looks like the proposal in the future is for it to be not this project, but it's a few, it, it's a future iteration perhaps.
I'd have to look closer at the specific. Jump on it.
Wasn't it originally then in this plan going to be two-way?
Yes, Elverado would be two-way. Yes.
Yeah. Which I don't know that that necessarily makes it any better for the blind corner.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I, so I appreciate the presentation and, and the work, uh, done. This is definitely going to make that intersection better, safer for everybody. I can imagine some culture shift changes, issues, and I don't know what the, it'd be interesting to see what the traffic impacts might be with folks having to stop at the stop sign, particularly when there's not during maybe hours when there's not as much, um, pedestrians walking, but maybe, you know, the flow of traffic. So what does that look like for the backup of vehicles? It, it'd just be helpful. Does it go into the intersection, um, at Pacific? So that's just kind of some of my thought. And then I appreciate, um, your comments, Councilmember Hoffa. Um, because the first thing that I think about is, um, um, bicycles and, and making sure that if we're going to be making some changes, how do we create the space to to show that we're bike friendly and create that space? So even sharrows would be helpful. Something to show that we're being intentional around creating bike safety. I think would be really helpful as we're going through this. And I, I know that's probably not the intention of this project, but I would encourage us to be mindful of that as we're rolling this out because, um, it, we're not really a bike friendly city and, 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 um, anything that we can do while we're making these kind of small tweaks would be just really helpful. I mean, I think it'd be a lost opportunity to not try to build something in there. Ideally for me, we create some protected bike lanes. I mean, even if we do something with, um, you know, like some cement, um, pots or whatever that looks like, if it's temporary for now, so that it helps maybe with the cost. But I think incorporating that in this project, um, would be of value to the community. That's it. I am done. You don't have to hear me talk on that anymore for now. And so you're looking for a motion now, Mr. Mayor?
This is
Have we gone to the public yet? It's just a presentation. Okay. And we'll go out to the public. Did, did we go to, did we go to the public? Yeah, we haven't yet gone yet. Is this going to come, is this project going to come back to the council?
No.
No, not unless the council voices, uh, some, uh, I guess desire to have it come back. This is just an informational item.
I guess, I guess I wonder what the, what the opportunity is to try to think a little bit deeper on the pit, on the bicycle aspect of this project. Because, because that, that part for me, I would hate for us to just kind of have the project move forward and not have really dug in deeper in regards to where the opportunities are there. So I'm almost compelled to want to say it would be interesting to have this come back to see where the opportunities are.
Well, we've already voted on the expenditure and the project.
Yeah. A, a, am I right in understanding that kind of at this point, there's not really opportunity to kind of do major revisions.
So this one is, 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 yeah, we're just looking at the intersection and originally the purpose and need was the ADA improvements. And so our, our footprint is pretty narrow. Uh, we do have a multi-mobility plan and maybe other opportunities to look at our, our bicycle network and make recommendations for, uh, changes or enhancements. But as, as part of this, uh, really specific intersection plan, I, I, I think we have a concept that we've brought to you before for approval and I'm trying to do more outreach. I, the opportunity to make additional incorporations, it would be challenging, not to say that it can't be done, but, uh, right now this was just an informational item and we could come back and present the multi-mobility plan or the downtown specific plan i- if we wanted to incorporate further, uh, recommendations for bicycle improvements. Can I jump in? Sorry.
I just wanted to add something that, uh, the sharrows are a good idea and simple to add. I just wanted to add something that the sharrows are a good idea and simple to add, and we'll continue to keep looking for opportunities. Right now, one of the big challenges that we have is parking. We have very narrow streets, so the choices are we remove parking and add bike lanes or we keep the parking. But there are definitely some some straightforward things we can do.
Well, and that was kind of part of why I brought it up because I I know that on Madison, the plan is to add parking spaces there, given that some are gonna be lost in the the slip piece. So if we were going to do it, I feel like now might be the opportunity to do that as opposed to trying to take more parking away later. So that's just kind of where part of my thought was, but I also don't want to overcomplicate this, and I appreciate the compromise with the sharrows. So thank you. All right. Any other comments from the council?
Yeah, the only
Did we lose Kim? Can somebody me check in with?
No, I'm right here.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to make sure we didn't lose.
Yeah, I was just, I'm thinking, and maybe this is something you reevaluate once it's done, but the yield, it's in front of the library as you turn right off of Pacific.
Oh, yeah.
I know that's a problem. And and as you go through this, I'm sure you have a plan, but it's not in this project.
Correct. We did look at a design and we have applied for Highway Safety Improvement Program funding for that. And we were working also with the fire department because they do like that slip lane. So that one needs to take a lot of a lot of thought and coordination with our fire department, but we are looking at that one.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'm sure that that will be adjusted as we go. And we all know that when school opened in August, that we were a bit overwhelmed. You experienced it. I experienced it going to the campus to get my grandson. But in the morning, it is a hot mess. It's getting better. The construction that they were doing up there at the same time. But during this construction and on school days, will that area be completely closed or you're gonna work around one lane and flagmen? So what's the plan to deal with the school, high school?
Sure. So during construction, we would only have one really short duration to do kind of a full closure on Calip for the pavement restoration, and that's estimated to be about two or three days. The rest of the time, we do have some like small pedestrian detours while we close down those pedestrian ramps.
Yeah.
But for the most part, we've taken into consideration the school schedule, the hours of construction, and making sure that we have pedestrian accommodations during construction.
Yeah, yeah, there's plenty of moving parts. Yes. Thank you, Andrew.
Sure. Um, I I appreciate our our Public Works team for the the little bit of of grilling here. And and it's a really interesting conversation because I think that it would be nice for us to do somewhat of a pause in regards to a lot of the work that we do and maybe have some larger planning discussions. But it's always hard, right? Because people come to the planning and then, you know, a project gets down 90% way to the field. And then people have more feedback input. But I do think it would be helpful for us to take a pause and look at some of these where these larger opportunities are. We can save that conversation for another day, but I just wanted to appreciate you all for coming to us nonetheless and taking some of the feedback and and presenting to the public in regards to what's ahead for us. So appreciate you guys. Thank you so much. All right, with that, oh, sorry, public comment. Anybody in the chamber wish to make a comment on this item? All right, I'll check online. So I'll do a countdown for folks to use the raise hand function via Zoom to five, four, three, two, one. We have nobody online, so we'll bring it back to the council and we'll move to council comments. You're good. You're good.
Yeah, we got a few.
Okay.
So one, last week, the Monterey Peninsula Chamber of Commerce hosted the Leadership Conference, which is all elected mayors, Board of Supervisors, couple of special districts in the airport. So that was good to hear. An overview from all the other cities and good lunch, good food and good company. Thank you for the Chamber of Commerce for hosting that. The MST word, the Coastal Commission met last last week on the 12th. It's been in the newspaper. The ruling was the Coastal Commission approved the application by MST for the bus transit, the Surf Bus Transit Line with some conditions. So those conditions will require sort of a back to the drawing board, but not a complete drawing board. We'll delay the project a bit. There's there's lots of conversations about how to hold on to the funding that was approved by some federal dollars and state dollars. So we'll have a meeting in October with the Board of MST to, you know, see what this means in terms of timeline. But it's moving ahead for a surf line relief on southbound, northbound one for line 20. You know, so that project is likely looking at mid 2025. And so it is moving ahead. It was approved, and there was only one vote of no at the Coastal Commission. So there was a lot of negotiations. Senator Laird really came through in terms of trying to get all the parties to be able to figure out a pathway forward. So we have that pathway forward. Tamsi has approved the right of way to allow MST to take their space for a long period of time. So it's a it's a go. It's not exactly the same project, but the route will be over where the train tracks are. So the Coastal Commission has approved with the requirement that all the train tracks are removed and the bus line, two-lane bus lanes are built over the railroad track space in order to comply with ESHA and all of the constraints that the Coastal Commission had. So it's not intended to be a side-by-side at this point, but the Coastal Commission also gives us the open door for future project for future train. So train is not disallowed. It's just this project is MST bus line and train still resides in terms of that space that's owned by Tamsi for future rail. Once we see where there's public dollars that can come to for projects and for federal and state dollars to get on board to build some type of rail. But we have no specific timeline for rail. We have no specific project for rail right now. We do have a specific approval for the Surf project that will move forward. So very, very pleased with that because if you want an experience, get on the freeway starting in Marina, or no, Casterville, and start at 7:15 in the morning, and you are in a parking lot all the way till you get to Monterey. So it's an incredible strain on the peninsula for those that have to get kids to school, people get to get to work and do all that through that seven o'clock to eight o'clock morning where it takes you literally 45 minutes to go five miles. So looking forward to some relief and the MST has moved forward in a project. And so once we get a little further along, we have to redesign some things, have to go back out to some bids. And we'll have Carl Sadori come in and staff member give a presentation as an update, which will tell you exactly a little bit more specifics on a timeline. So that's the update from MST.
Thank you.
And kind of an update from Tamsi as well.
Awesome. Appreciate that, Councilmember Smith and Dr. Barber.
Yes, just wanted to say, good to see everybody. Thank you so much for just allowing me to be through Zoom to be able to see your wonderful faces and to see everybody that was already in the chamber and that are still there. So thank you for what you continue to do.
Well, we appreciate you, Dr. Barber, for participating, even though you, even though it's hard for you to be here in person, we're glad to have you here and wishing you all the best in your healing. I just wanted to bring one thing up that I've observed. Actually, I'm gonna do two two announcements and I'll stick to to water for a second. As many folks are aware, Senator John Laird hosted a water workshop about a month and a half ago now. And it was a closed-door discussion with key stakeholders from a variety of viewpoints and perspectives on the on the water issue from Calam to the Water Management District, M1W Business Community, Housing Focused Groups. There was a representative from the State Water Resources Control Board. All the peninsula mayors were there and and city managers. And the one thing that I took away from that closed-door discussion was the opportunity for us to look at a kind of a midterm solution to our water supply needs. And with the expansion coming online next year, there's some debate around the reliability of the source water associated with that. But what is clear is that that number isn't zero. And so the the rep from the State Water Resources Control Board shared that if you all can agree on some midterm solution, we could look at having the cease and desist order lifted temporarily over a certain period of time, say 10 or 15 years. And that does two things. One, it allows the state to have more years of data to determine the reliability of the source water for Monterey or for pure water Monterey. But it also, if we get the CDO lifted, allows us to prove how successful we are in actually creating housing in our region and how quickly are we to utilize that available water supply? And so what I did from there was immediately went to the Mayor's Association. I I'm the chair of the Mayor's Association right now, so all 12 mayors in Monterey County, we meet on a monthly basis. And we've been having a discussion around the potential of us agreeing on a pathway forward. And the thought there is that if both peninsula or coastal mayors, along with Salinas Valley mayors, can all agree across the region, that I think it would send a very loud message in regards to our ability to be able to get our other stakeholders on board to submit a proposal to the State Water Resources Control Board. So that's something that's in the works. I don't know if it's gonna work out, but I just kind of wanted to share that as an update because stuff is happening. I know that there's some other ideas out there in regards to how we can make this work, but I just kind of wanted to share that as an update that there are conversations happening and pathways forward that I think can allow us to move forward in a productive way to get some housing built, which is what it's about at the end of the day. And and part of my message, and this will be my last point on this topic, but part of my message to the mayors in Salinas Valley, who I think have some of the greatest concerns being expressed, particularly because of the ag interest and the debates between ag water and peninsula water, is we need to do our part in Monterey County of building housing here. Because what ends up happening is that our workforce is living in places like Salinas and South County. So let's get our housing built for our workforce here, and let's stop putting an undue burden as they continue to develop housing in the valley. Let's let them have that for for the needs within their communities. So we all need to do our part and come together, and I'm just optimistic about an opportunity for us to hopefully get something figured out so that by the time that the expansion comes online in August of next year, that we're ready to go to to start allocating water. And then the and then the last thing I wanted to bring up is every election cycle that I've been involved with, I have found it, known it to be fact that there are multifamily residential complexes or or single-family residential units that are rentals that have signs being put up from candidates that didn't get the permission of the renter living in those units. And it's it's frustrating as a as a candidate who tends not to get the support from from kind of I would I would offer more, you know, modern kind of Association of Realtors-esque related organizations and that can lever and when opponents can leverage can leverage property management companies to help distribute signs on properties showing an artificial representation of a certain political agenda. And I I express that from my own feelings because I'm trying to be authentic around kind of what that looks like. But I think more importantly, how hurtful it is and offensive it is to the renters that live in those units. And I don't know if there's an opportunity for the city of Monterey to establish some kind of policy that prevents that type of behavior. Because I've literally had people calling me crying and frustrated and upset around them having to come home every single day because campaigns go to the landlord and ask permission to put signs up on their property and the renter disagrees with those political values. And it's it's not representational of how people really feel. I know that they own that land, but why don't you just let the political campaign be what it is and allow the people in this community to decide the candidate of choice and not show some artificial support for a candidate? So I'm just putting that out there. I I'm open to having a deeper conversation with staff in regards to where the possibilities might be. I kind of maybe lobby that one over to the city attorney's office to see if there might be an opportunity for something there, but I I also understand that the issues with property rights and and what might go along with that. So just had to say that because I've dealt with it every single election cycle that I've been a part of since being with the city. Don't want to end on a damp note, damper note, but I felt like it had to be said. So
Can I ask you a question?
Well, I want to avoid us getting into a conversation because this isn't something that's on the agenda. It's just council comments, and I just want to be sure. We can talk offline. How about we 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 talk offline?
I wanna I wanna get more detail about some conversations on the water.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, on MW1.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, let's talk offline and then maybe we can even have it as a presentation or something at a future.
Yeah, because I think there's still a lot of confusion about the project date and if there's a contract with Source Water. Because I don't know that there's a contract for Source Water, so I'm confused about the timeline of going online.
Yeah, everything, everything associated with the water purchase agreement that allowed the expansion to go forward has contractual rights for the Source Water. But again, we could talk about that more offline. With that, I'll pass it to the city manager for city manager reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council today is following the theme of Mayor Williamson's remarks, National Boulder Day. So register register to vote. Here in California, you can use the website registratovoat.ca.gov to do just that. I wanted to point out that the city has created a partnership with Montage Health, where we basically are working through the sports center, providing lifestyle initiatives, a series of events to help positively impact our community. The first one will be on September 21st. That is this week about healthy aging will be all in the sports center. There will be a variety of wellness resources presented, blood pressure screenings, presentation for Montage Health physicians on on the topic of healthy aging for older adults and their families. And then last but not least, this week on Friday, Parking Day Downtown Elverado Street, we are transforming parking spaces to show the show the residents and our visitors how you can create a new creative spaces in a downtown area if you don't use the spaces for cars. But if you allow people to show creative creative alternatives. The first one we did Parking Day like that was in 2008. We did it last year and I think the previous year already. And I encourage everyone to come. The city departments will be presenting various alternatives to to parking spots. It's this week Friday from 10 to 2:30 downtown Elverado Street. Thank you.
Alrighty, and it's, look at that, it's seven o'clock. Three hours later. And with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you, everybody.
Somebody won. Somebody won.